I call this special town meeting to order. Couple pieces of business. Because I'm basically impolite, I have failed to introduce our new town council, Lisa Mead. She's up here keeping me straight, so be nice to her. I have to be nice to her. On another note, I'd like to have a moment of silence. We've lost a couple servants of the town lately. Just the other day, retired fire chief Crawford, and a little while ago, a longtime school committee member, Joan Miles, passed away. So could we have just a moment of silence to think of the services that they've given Okay, could you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, let's get the usual business out of the way. The moderator would consider a motion to allow us to vote by raising our hands as opposed to standing. Second? All in favor? At least one person stand up. Thank you. All opposed? Motion carries. I'd also consider a motion to appoint Frank Monaco as deputy moderator. Should I be unable to continue? All in favor? It still passes, Tom. I'd like to thank our high school helpers tonight, Ethan Sair, Nolan Woods, Sean Gallagher, Erin Burke, and Marina Grasso. Thanks for your help tonight. And now on to the special town meeting. Article one, withdrawn. Article two, authorization to accept Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 55(c), Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It is hereby requested that article be moved as printed in the warrant. Mr. Dougherty.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, I suppose we should get some recommendations. Ways and Means.
Ways and Means voted four in favor, five opposed, and zero abstentions, and we can get into the reasons later.
Capital budget work on this one? Okay, thank you. It's all yours, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm sure the town meeting members have all had a chance to read the backup. Glad somebody got it. But essentially, this is, and I'll say in one large respect, what the intent here is it's really a bookkeeping-type operation to get the money that we have currently and some money that we envision getting, not envision, but we will be getting once the Corporate Drive development is finished, to get that into an account that will be dedicated for affordable housing purposes. It's kind of the trend. A hundred communities have gone this route, and from an affordable housing standpoint, most people in that business, if you will, or whether that business being from the government's side or anywhere else, this is the mechanism everybody seems to be gravitating to. There are some benefits of having it ultimately if we ever do, and I'm not here to propose it, but if there's ever a CPA or anything like that, it's something that goes to that as well. I will tell you that in the dialogue with Ways and Means, as well as the subcommittee, I think where the rubber really hits the road, if you will, to bring it down to, I think with the, at least what I've heard so far, the debate has been, do you want to bring this, take the power of appropriating this money from the town meeting to a trust, group of trustees that this trust sets up? And that number would range between five and nine. I don't want to, you know, I'm here to answer any questions, but I just don't want to go into a long discussion. I know you've spent a lot of time here already, so I guess, if I could, Mr. Moderator, I would just leave it up to you, and if questions come up, we can field them.
Questions from the body. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phyllis Neufeld, Precinct Five. In reading the backup information, and by the way, I have nothing against affordable housing, but there was specific questions that were raised that said a good first step would first be for your chief executive officer to establish a municipal task force charged with evaluating whether a housing trust could work for your community. It also talked about finding likely funding sources in advance. My question is, have we gone through that process, and that I'm painfully unaware of it, or are we putting the cart before the horse?
There was a comment raised on that particular matter as well. You know, to me, to be dead honest with you, if you look at, if you look at the cover sheet for that particular thing, this is kind of like a user's guide to a certain extent, and I'm not sure that's how government works every day of the week. So there has been some internal discussion. This has been going on for a while, you know, kind of ad hoc. It actually included a town, new town administrator when he was the town accountant as well. So the planning director has opined on it in the past as well about something that we should gravitate to potentially, but I'll let those individuals speak for themselves. The second question, I can tell you definitively, we have a commitment from the Davis Company that when they get the COs for Corporate Drive, we get $600,000. So there is funding coming in, and currently, we probably have a balance in the account of somewhere around 225, maybe somewhere between 200, say, and 250 range, something like that in there currently.
Mr. Boyven, please.
Bill Boyven, Precinct One. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In looking at the sources of income that can come into this housing trust fund, I did see the Community Preservation Act, but I also saw something else here that caught my eye because of another item on the warrant this evening, and that's, it says here, cell tower lease payments in some communities go into this. Is there any thought of these new small cell installations, the fees that come from that, going into this affordable housing fund as well?
I don't have the wisdom you had, so, no. I actually hadn't thought about that. Certainly, the prerogative, you know, of the body, I guess, when you get to that next article, if you wanted to go about dedicating that, I don't know if the town has other plans for what they want to utilize that money for, but just from the Affordable Housing Coordinator, we're always looking for funds, whether it's private donations, just as a plug, or it's found money like that.
Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Eiler, Precinct Six, also Ways and Means. I was one of the five on Ways and Means that voted not to support this. Had quite a few thoughts in looking through this, so please bear with me. You know, probably, there's two main concerns with this that I have. One is it is replacing town meeting in the sense of the trustees will now be responsible for making all the financial decisions for this money. I respectfully disagree in calling this a simple bookkeeping thing. This is, to me, a very major change, and we're not talking about a small amount of money. If we're looking at things like CP, Community Preservation Act money going into this, we're potentially talking, you know, over a million dollars a year in this. So this is not a small change kind of thing. It's definitely transferring appropriation authority to a group of trustees that are appointed by the selectmen. So you will have no control over this spending. I think I saw a similar item for a million dollars at our previous meeting that we tabled because it was not well specified enough. This is something of that magnitude happening every single year. So we're transferring appropriation authority from all of you to a group of approximately five trustees that have been appointed by the selectmen. This is going to be really hard to undo if you decide you don't like it, so we want to be very careful about this. The second part of this that worried me is there's absolutely no trust document in the backup. So I personally, and I don't think any of you have any idea what this actually will be. I don't know about you, but I would never approve a trust document sight unseen, which is effectively what we're being asked to do here. So there's no way to really evaluate this. So some of the things that are completely missing from the backup that I saw, I think there's this broad idea that somehow we wish to help support affordable housing, which in the abstract certainly sounds like a good idea. But some things to consider, what percentage of, if the goal is to expand affordable housing, what percentage are we shooting for? Burlington's one of the less than 20% of communities that are already over the 40B 10% threshold. So if you look through your backup materials, you'll see a lot of examples of different communities that have done this and have various plans. I looked up quite a few of those. Those communities are in the 5% range or lower oftentimes. So it's not surprising that they need to have a very significant push to raise their affordable housing, to achieve that 10% threshold. Burlington doesn't have that same impetus, so we're in a different space than those 100-plus communities that might be doing this already. So what may be appropriate for many people, perhaps 80% of the communities in Massachusetts, may not be appropriate for us. So I'm a little unclear on the goals. What percentage are we shooting for? Is that even the goal? One of the other things mentioned in here is rental assistance. Are we trying to do rental assistance instead of build affordable housing? Are we trying to do both? I don't know. It's not specified. There's no document that's describing what the goal is. What's the strategy? Are we, one of the things specified in here is that we could buy property and redevelop it into affordable housing. Another strategy mentioned is that we could finance both nonprofit and for-profit people, developers, to create housing. I personally don't want to be in the business of the town financing for-profit entities. What is even the annual budget? I have no clue. There's absolutely nothing about the finances. What is the source of the money? We heard that there's one developer that has part of their requirement is to kick in about 600K. Is Community Preservation Act money going to be allocated to this? Is that our intention? Do we want to have cell tower leases in there? One of the things mentioned in there is that some of these trusts have the authority to borrow money. I don't want the trusts obligating the town without town meeting approval. So I think there's a lot of holes in this, and, you know, there's no fear greater than the fear of the unknown, and that's really the concern I have here, is this is essentially a completely unspecified trust that we're being asked to buy into with a potentially very large budget that we will no longer be able to control and will never be able to undo. So I would suggest that we ask for a lot more detail on this before we would even consider voting on it. Thank you.
Mr. Tate.
David Tate, Precinct Five, also Ways and Means member, and I was one of the members that was voted to support this. Let me first say, right now, we have monies that are allocated for affordable housing. We've raised it over a period of time with certain developments. We have about 400 in there now. We, back in the fall, we appropriated, this committee voted for 250,000 to purchase a building at 117 Bedford Street. That was article number one. It was withdrawn because we've already approved it. By buying that back, it keeps our affordable housing stock where it is. But over time, we've generated, through other projects and other commitments, 400,000. Again, we're going to use some here. The Davis Company now is coming in, and we're going to have another 600,000. It is segregated with the account, with the, at Town Hall, for affordable housing purposes. We have an affordable housing committee that is now in place, kind of looking at deals, but correct, we're at the 10% plateau. We don't need to be looking for additional affordable housing like other communities. We don't have to worry about a 40B coming in because we're at that level. But quite frankly, we have a million bucks that has been generated off of affordable housing ventures for the sole purpose of promoting affordable housing in the town. And right now, when you don't have a committee that's really delegated and designated or passionate about promoting affordable housing, quite frankly, the money's just going to sit in the account. And this is the first time we had the opportunity to use some of the money to keep the stock in line. But again, without a committee formed, without looking for ideas, ways to promote it through a segregated trust, I feel it's just going to be money that's just kind of set aside, and really, there's going to be nothing being done for it. You get the formation of a trust, which is done through the selectmen, but it's five to nine members of people that are in various committees in town that are passionate about this topic, and that is to promote affordable housing in the town. They can't willingly borrow money. They can't do that, but they do have decision-making powers in order to promote affordable housing. As far as the preservation, it's got a million dollars. We haven't seen, you know, we saw different clumps that came in, but this isn't money that's been rolling in and we're just generating and looking for somewhere to spend it. We've accumulated this money over time, but we really haven't done anything with it. Preservation trust is separate. So if we want that to be included within the trust, the body is going to have to approve that going through. There isn't a budget. We're not going to be paying people to sit on the committee, and actually, there's a limitation in how long people can stay on the committee. There has to be a rolling interest of people that are looking at these projects. So yes, my concern up front in the subcommittee that kind of looked at this, you know, the big idea is that it takes decision-making out of the members here, the body here. But again, I think when you get a separate board that is set up, has the accountability, the control, and the autonomy to do good for affordable housing in town, to promote affordable housing, to figure out where it's best suited, money that's been raised by these projects that have kept us over the 10% and can only help us in the future, I think it was worth doing, and we can look at the other ideas as far as what other monies to put in the account, if that's what we want to do. If we don't want to use the other money through the Preservation Trust or the cell towers or whatever, we don't need to put the money in there. But I think by, we have enough money in there now to do some good. I'd like to see it do some good.
Further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, Precinct Seven. Would the members of this board be eligible for town benefits?
No, there's, they're not elected. There aren't going to be salaries, as David just pointed out. So no, that's not, this is a committee like, you know, Library Trustees or, you know, probably the Simon Trustees and things like that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Myrna. Martha Saltman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Myrna Saltman, Precinct Two. We have a housing authority in town. How does that fit into this? I mean, do they do any planning for affordable housing?
Mr. Dougherty.
The housing authority has nothing to do with this trust, nor do they have anything to do with the current situation, how we currently operate. They do their own thing. I'm not sure exactly what they're up to, you know, what their strategy is for trying to develop housing, so I honestly don't know. I just want to clarify one thing about the dollars here because it's very important in one comment that I made earlier that I don't want to be misconstrued. My comment was not that this whole thing is a bookkeeping issue. The details of simply creating the trust, leaving it in a dedicated account now is the bookkeeping. I mentioned there's big policy questions that this body should debate, as well as these other issues, but I don't want to misconstrue that. I was trying to pass the whole thing off that way. I stipulated right up front what it was. Second thing I want to clarify, we keep referring to this million dollars, okay? The 400,000 that was there that David correctly cited when I had a meeting with him is now 152,000 less than that, thanks to this body in September who authorized that 250, but we were able to acquire the property just the other day for 152. So we're talking down to 250. The bulk of that 250 was generated as a result of Grandview Commons. So this is not, we're getting a lot of income coming into this every year. The 600,000, again, we may never even see another one of those in our lifetime or in the next 10 or 20 years. Who knows? So this is essentially some existing money and future money that's coming in. This is not an annual budget that will be, you know, a million dollars will be coming into. I just wanted to clarify that.
Ms. Phillips, is that you up the back?
Hi, I am a little bit concerned too. I kind of like it this way. It's cleverly designed. Better? Cindy Phillips, Precinct Two. Thank you. I'm a little bit concerned because I work in the field of elders, and what we're seeing through the council on aging and through planning boards, et cetera, is the people who are living in housing and aging are trapped there. And I don't know that our discussion about affordable housing is looking at the community. I think it's looking at development. It's looking at what we already have been doing, but I don't think we're looking at the community, and that's really important. So I would just want to add that. And I'm not sure we shouldn't have a committee first and then figure out about the money
Your last question for us, as David pointed out, we do have a committee, okay? What this is talking about is setting up a group of trustees who will oversee the trust. So what you will have, if things continue on, you will still have an affordable housing committee, and then you will have that committee, rather than come to this body, go to the trustees and request the funding from the trustees. We could defer to the town council for her opinion, but I don't believe that body can just go out and request mortgages or put this, bind this town to any debt. But, Mr. Moderator, I would defer to the town council on that particular question. Having said that, to your point, we certainly recognize the, if you will, baby boomers or people getting over 55. As a matter of fact, I'll pick on Mike Runyon in particular, but the majority of the selectmen that I've encountered over the time I've been here, he's been a huge proponent of that. We've fought hard and pushed hard for the developers on Corporate Drive to do outreach to that community. I know the attorney, Mr. Buckley, on that is working personally with council on aging on that, so we do try to do that. And also, there's a 40B that was recently proposed, and that is exclusively, if it gets approved by the state, but in terms of why it was approved here at the local level, it was largely endorsed solely because it was addressing the aging population. To your point, we view that as a major area of concern as well, and any involvement, any information you could bring us to assist in that, we'd certainly like it because, as I say, these people over here have really been hitting me a lot with trying to address that matter, with the lack of options for those people in the community. Thank you.
Ms. Mead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The statute does give authority to the trust to borrow and mortgage and use its assets as collateral. The trust document can limit that authority, but the statute does allow that authority.
Ms. Nash.
Mildred Nash, Precinct Three. I have two comments on this. The first is that town meeting, I think, has always been well-served by town meeting committees. When we have something that we're concerned with and we have a committee within the body, they usually come back with something that pleases us more than when it comes from people that are outside of town meeting. But the second thing that concerns me is that to be discussing something this huge at a special town meeting in the middle of the May town meeting says to me, this looks like it's being rushed through with pages and pages and pages of things that it's hard to process. And when I see that the Ways and Means Committee has more people against this than for this, I think even if this is a brilliant idea, this is the wrong time. It needs to be thought out far more clearly, and that we don't just give away power that is ours for reasons that don't seem very clear. I would suggest we vote this down. Thank you.
Frank Monaco, Precinct Four. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First of all, just a point of order. On some articles, if you vote them down, there's a timer on how long before you could ever bring it back. I don't believe that's the case here. Couldn't this be brought back?
Yes, it could be brought back.
Okay, so we could do, so if it doesn't pass, well, first of all, let me just say that I'm one of the people on Ways and Means that really struggled with this, and I actually am not in favor of it, but for a very, very simple reason. I really would like to find a mechanism that would allow town meeting to still have a way to vote on approving what the trustees are bringing forward to spend money on. It's the spending, the actual spending, that I think we would be better off having the visibility than not. One of the arguments against that is a town meeting only meets three times a year, and some of these items could have timeliness to them, and we could be in the way. I'm not that moved by that, and furthermore, I think you could use a special town meeting if you had to to pass something. So that's where I stood on it. But what I'm wondering is, is there a problem if we were to either table or postpone this to a time certain from the proponents' points of view? I know that there's money coming in, and we're going to have to accept that, and would rather accept it into the trust fund than not, but we can't accept it into, it's kind of a revolving account, and we can pocket there certainly for, I would think, six months without a problem or a year. So I would be inclined to postpone this for two reasons. One, I'd like to see a little bit more meat on the bones along the lines of what Mr. Eiler was talking about. I think a little more detail would help us. I think we're not really that certain about what we're getting into here. And the other thing is, the way I read the law, the Mass. General Law, I did read it the way council has interpreted it. They do, in fact, have authority to engage in various kinds of mechanisms of money handling. But there's also a way, I believe, that at the local level, we can amend the Mass. General Law that would allow it to do everything that it's intended to do the way it's intended to do it, but we still could require a simple vote of town meeting for the final approval of the expenditure. I'm not sure that's the case, but I think it may be possible, and I'd like to know the answer to that. So I don't, I guess just defeating this, if it's defeated, is good enough to bring it back. defeating this, if it's defeated, is good enough to bring it back. So, we'll leave it at that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Willard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct Four. I'd like to move that we postpone this to a time certain, that being the January town meeting, with the request that either you appoint or you and the selectmen appoint. This is not part of my motion, but I'd like you to appoint some volunteers to gather more information so that we can discuss this with, and be fully informed, perhaps at the information sessions before the January town meeting. So, I'm simply moving to postpone this to a time certain, January town meeting, 2020.
Discussion on that motion. There being none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. It's been postponed until January. Okay. Article Three. Our town, Town of Burlington policy for the applications for small cell wireless installations. And you're going to have to bear with me because I have to read this, and Amy printed it in small type, so. It is hereby requested that Article Three be moved as follows: "To see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by adding a new section 1.43 under Article Eight, excuse me, Article 13, Public Safety, by adopting the following text: 1.43, Small Wireless Facilities in Rites of Way; 1.43.1, For the purposes of this bylaw, small wireless facilities are facilities as defined in 47 CFR 1.1312E2, and as such may be amended from time to time. 1.43.2, No person shall install or maintain a small wireless facility in any public or private right of way unless first approved by the Board of Selectmen. 1.43.3, Policies and Procedures. The Board of Selectmen shall adopt and from time to time amend policies, rules, and regulations relative to the issuance of approvals under this Article 13, Section 1.43. A copy of the policies, rules, and regulations shall be on file with the town clerk. Such rules shall include, but not be limited to, prescribing the form, content, style, and number for application forms, the fees collectible with the applications, the process by which the application will be reviewed, the design and location criteria for approval, the time within which the Board of Selectmen will issue a decision, and requirements for recertification." Did you get all that? Just as a little bookkeeping here, there is a, this is a town bylaw, general bylaw. There is also a zoning bylaw that's associated with this, which is in the regular town meeting, and we will discuss both of them now, if that's acceptable, because they're pretty much the same, no sense talking about them twice. And then we will move, with your approval, the zoning bylaw. We'll take it up right after we close the special town meeting. Take it away. Ms. Krishner? Ms. Kastner, excuse me.
Mr. Moderator, we have to actually hand it to Selectman Tigges to kick us off.
Okay, Mr. Tigges.
Thanks, Kristin. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, the big question is, what is a small cell or a small wireless facility? The definition, or a summary of the definition is, it's a technology that is needed to meet the data demands of 4G and 5G communication. They are smaller, shorter, and much closer together than the traditional tower for cellular telephone service. Distance between antenna range, antennas range from 150 feet to half a mile, depending on demand. So, how did this start? Why are we here? In the summer of 2018, we had an applicant come before the Board of Selectmen. They wanted to put some small cells in. There were so many unanswered questions. One, we really didn't know what they were. We didn't have their grand plan. We didn't have their master plan. They just came looking for approval for seven sites. And we basically said, take a step back. We, as a town, need to look at this, because we've never dealt with this before. So, we postponed or continued the hearing, and we decided, the Board of Selectmen decided to form a small cell committee. The small cell committee consisted of employees of the departments of the town, police, fire, engineering, planning, some other, there was, and then we also chose members of appointed boards, or boards, border health, bylaw, planning as well, and it was just a combination of employees and elected boards. We met numerous, numerous, numerous times to figure this out. We didn't know what we were dealing with. So, as we're working on this from the summer of 2018, we thought we had a good handle on it, and then it's September of 2018, the FCC comes down with new regulations regarding small wireless facilities. And at this point, I'll turn it over to our special counsel, Donna Brewer, who can just take it from this point to the next chapter.
Thank you, Mr. Selectman. Good evening, everybody. So, in September 2018, the Federal Communications Commission adopted what they called their declaratory ruling and third report and order. Basically, what this rather voluminous document does is adopt everything that the small wireless facility companies wanted to have adopted, and in the process, severely limited what municipalities can do to regulate small wireless facilities in their communities. It did so in a number of different ways. The first way I'd like to talk about is the shot clock deadlines. What it did is impose an extremely short period of time within which municipalities can approve or disapprove these kinds of facilities. Essentially, the communities have between 60 and 150 days to approve or disapprove these once the applications come in. And the shortest period of time falls on the applications that are probably most likely to come, which is on existing poles. These small wireless facilities, which we don't have a picture of up there, but basically they're in the antennas on top of existing poles. Communities get 60 days to determine whether these are appropriate for your community. Those are called shot clock deadlines. Secondly, what it did is it truncated the money that the towns can raise or can apply as a fee in order to review these. As you might imagine, these things are rather technical. Your Selectman Tigges just told you that they didn't know what these things were coming in. Fortunately or unfortunately, Burlington is in the unenviable posture of being one of the first in the country to have to deal and to have dealt this much detail in what this brand-new technology requires. So, you're going to need experts. But the FCC, in its wisdom, decided that communities could not charge more than $100 for an application fee per facility. You get $100. You can charge more if you can prove the cost, but they've made that extremely difficult for you to do. So, you have $100, you have 60 days, and on top of it, they tell you that if you're going to impose aesthetic requirements, that you have to do so in a reasonable, objective, published manner. They have to be available to the applicants before the applications come in, and they have to be substantially similar to the aesthetic requirements that you would impose on substantially similar equipment. Now, frankly, there isn't substantially similar equipment, but what it does mean, perhaps, are that the aesthetic requirements that you impose now, you might be stuck with for a while because somebody coming in later might say, you can't impose new standards because you didn't impose them on the first one. So, your communities, your employees have worked really hard to get these aesthetic requirements in place and get them to be reasonable. And in that, I'll turn it over to Kristin.
We know this one works, so, I think. So, thank you, Donna. We were, our heads were spinning with this in September and over the summer, and we had an applicant who had seven applications that looked like this. And then we said, how many more do you want? He said, I don't know, maybe 60 or more. And we said, what? So, I applaud the Selectmen and Selectman Tigges for getting this committee together and inviting as wide a diversity of departments to be involved in getting this done. I went to the Mass. Municipal Association Conference in January. Donna Brewer gave a terrific, succinct, easily understandable presentation on small cell that no one, that I had ever talked to had done before, and we were desperate for getting this done from January to April to get all the policy, application, and design regulations done, and then bring it to you here. I can't believe we made it, but we made it because of Attorney Brewer's help, so I want to thank her tremendously. The three things we needed to do and are allowed to do under the FCC guidelines: create application criteria, create aesthetic requirements. With that, we also need to create the power to enforce those regulations that are from the bylaw. So, this is the third step in really making these effective and legally defensible in Burlington. So, through December, through January to April, we worked hard to get the application cover sheet, the policy guide for small cell with the Selectmen. It's been adopted by the Selectmen and the Planning Board in terms of any applications. The Planning Board is going to be dealing with anything on private property. The Selectmen will deal with anything in the right of way. So, you kind of have a two, two boards doing the same thing effectively, and that's why you see these in the general and the zoning. They're essentially subject matter, that's exactly the same. The mechanism's a little bit different, just because the general zoning's a little different. But we adopted those and the design rules and regs in April as well. Design rules and regs, some of the features are, control the number of locations per application, as well as the application completeness and review criteria, citing preferences and prohibition, including, we talked about not citing small cell wireless facilities on double poles, making sure they're ADA compliant, clear, keeping travel ways clear, and making sure, obviously, there's no site distance issues for vehicle travel. And then the design criteria, one of the key, key issues were concealment, color, height, and structural integration with whatever they're on, because what we saw a lot of was things like this. We don't want hundreds and hundreds of these in Burlington. And when we started talking to people who wanted to come in, it was, okay, well, we could do this without a lack of aesthetic controls. So, therefore, we encourage doing more of something like this to integrate the infrastructure into already kind of recognizable features, such as streetlights, such as the thing that looks like a mailbox is actually a transformer for a pole that's right next to it, but it doesn't look like a giant transformer. It looks like a cute little mailbox, and other ways to add the infrastructure without it being a noticeable impact. As many of you, I mean, I think you can't pick up a newspaper without reading about 4G and 5G coming down, down the road. The FCC has really cleared, paved the way for a rapid race car going through and given us very few controls. We've tried to take up those controls. There isn't a lot of examples up, out there. We are one of the early adopting communities for a lot of this language. I will say, I think we were flooded with calls in April of, did you guys do this already? Can I have a copy? So, which is flattering, but hopefully we did it well. And the last thing I just want to say in closing is, small cell technology is, is moving forward. Yesterday is going to be different than tomorrow, tomorrow, the next day. So, we wanted to make sure they were as flexible as possible, so we wanted to keep really the meat in the policy and the design reg. So, if some company comes out with a better-looking something tomorrow, that we can make sure we can roll it in and adopt that policy and not, but make sure that the controls come from this body, to make sure that we're really continuing to preserve the aesthetic view shed of all of our streets in Burlington. So, and I'll leave it off with.
Just a little follow-up to both Donna and Kristin. One other, a couple other things too, is when an application is received by the town, the town has 10 days to tell the applicant whether it's a complete application or not. If we don't answer that applicant or respond to their application, by default, it's deemed approved. So, we have 10 days, and as Donna stated, we need professional help. So, what we've done in the meantime, yeah, we all, believe me, that type of help, too. Technical help, let me put it that way. Some of us may need professional help, but I'm talking about technical help. So, we don't have the technical help. So, what we've done is, thank you to Whitney, because she did a lot of work, and we've contracted with an RF engineer to review applications and let the, at the town, know if the application is complete or not. And if it's not complete, they have to complete it. But we don't have anyone, staff, who can read these. I mean, there's more acronyms in these applications and MEMOs and RFs and all kinds of things that I've never even heard of. So, we have a contract, an RF engineer on standby for when they come in to review the applications, which are about six pages long, not counting the policy, not counting the design standards. April 14th, we had to meet every deadline. If we didn't have the design standards or all this stuff in place by April 14th, you don't have them. And there are towns out there that won't have these. And as Attorney Brewer stated, we believe we're the first in the state of Massachusetts to go this far, and we are one of the first in the country. We're getting emails from all across the country and saying, how did you guys do this? So, I think we're doing the right thing. If other people are looking to us for guidance, I think we're on the right track here. Anything further?
One question that might come up is why, with all of the technology that's involved in this, why is the bylaw relatively short? And the reason is that the bylaw is deliberately short to give the selectmen and your staff the flexibility to change policies to keep up with the changes in technology. If we had to change the bylaw every time, then you'd be getting these bylaw changes every single meeting. As Jim pointed out to me before the meeting, they've actually already amended the policy six times since September. So, as you can see, it's really important that that flexibility be maintained, and we've done that in these draft bylaws.
Do the selectmen have a vote on this?
Yes, we voted 5-0 to approve.
Bylaw review, Mr. Tigges. The other, Mr. Tigges. No nepotism here.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Tigges, Precinct Six, Chair of Bylaw Review. We did have a couple meetings where we talked about this, and like has been mentioned many times, you know, the landscape of this changed over and over and over again. So, in trying to create a bylaw that gave the town the best way to handle these rapid changes, the inclusion of citations, for example, to the FCC definition of small cells, allowing the Selectmen some flexibility in determining what the policy actually will be, given the FCC could change it at the drop of a hat, our committee voted 5-0 in favor of this. Thank you.
Questions from the body on this? Mr. Monaco, and then Mr. Glantz next.
Mr. Moderator, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. First, a simplistic question. So if you go back there, that slide, take the middle picture in the bottom with that vertical standpipe, black standpipe thing on top of the light, I assume that's an enclosure for the equipment? Equipment?
Yes.
Okay. So my first question is, obviously, that doesn't look too bad compared to, you know, what someone came in with, these gigantic cabinets, but do we, does our bylaw, right, does our bylaw specify the cabinet design that they have to use?
Yes.
So, okay, just to keep, the policy goes.
The pileup, the bylaw does not. The design rules and regs do.
Okay. Do we have the authority? If they come in, they just walk in the door, right? And they come in with a cabinet that's not that, which they could do, do we then simply have the right to tell them, "No, you have to, you have to match that design," and they have to do that?
Yes, they have to match the design intent, which is in the, the policy, and that's what the bylaw refers to, that you, the bylaw gives power to the rules and regs into that the bylaw says, "We enact the bylaw for, to cover small cell wireless facilities, and small cell wireless facilities must comply with the policy."
So we're confident that we have the, the authority, the legal authority, to demand that type of a cabinet if we so choose?
Yes, we have about 10 to 12 pages worth of concealment.
All right, so that's, that's step one to making it look a whole lot better. And then the other question I have is, so all of this technology, I assume that the 5G is even shorter range than the 4G, but in any event, it's very short range, and so you need a lot of them in order to get a real coverage of a big radius. I'm assuming none of this equipment ever goes inside of a building? Am I correct?
Um.
Is it always exterior to the building? Because that puzzles me just a little bit.
So, through the moderator. So what, we, we've talked to a lot of people, a lot of people that have explained a lot of really highly technical information to us, which I will say I haven't retained all of it. But the one thing that, for some reason, and for a clear reason of trying to get data down to manageable level, it's about 150 to a quarter mile is kind of the range that that data can travel. If you think of a band that, you know, for 1, 2G is like this, but 4, 5G is like this, this piece of string is the same length, but it's a lot shorter in distance for the wavelengths. But anyway.
Got it, the squigglies.
The squigglies, yes, the technical term. But anyway, oh, so they can be inside buildings, you can have, we have some regulations or some language that talks about hiding them within cupolas of building, within church towers, and again, you're getting at the distance issue is, who are the people you're trying to serve? And right now, it's, the first phase is really getting roadways to have, and that's why you're seeing a lot of this on telephone poles and streetlights and people moving in cars for automated, you know, cars and all that stuff. But there are applications for in buildings, around buildings, to maintain that distance. But it's also the squiggly line. You know, you're going through walls and you're going through other things that are a challenge, so.
So inside of a building, is it going to be the same type of enclosure?
You'll see, it's a little bit more flat, like you can see it on the side of it.
So you've designed, you've got design criteria for interior, not rooftop or street side, but interior, we have design criteria for that as well?
Yes, and the wall mount is going to be similar to the wall mount you see for wireless right now, which it's not very noticeable, but again, it's a lot closer, at a closer height, and when we've talked to people, we said, "Is that a realistic thing that we should be working with developers on? Should we be integrating technology into the infrastructure we're building, not just in the roadways, but on private property?" And, you know, it's, yeah, but we're really interested in streetlights, poles, and freestanding poles right now.
Okay, so this, I think this takes us, you know, about as far as we're going to be able to go with controlling it right now. My expectation would be that the miniaturization of the technology is probably also going to move along for the same wavelength, and so we may be able to actually get smaller cabinets over time, and we have room to do that if we'd like as well. We don't have to, are we going to be stuck with, well, you know, Sprint put up 1,000 of them in that cabinet, and now someone else comes along, turns out we could use half that size cabinet? Do we have the ability going forward to change it?
That's one of the main reasons we don't want language in the zoning bylaw at least, because then you'll have grandfathering within, you know, that, that we submitted this so, you know, we can vest to a certain date. We don't want any of that. We want to be up to the minute as, you know, to be up to the minute with, and up to date with technology. Every streetlight company is looking at this, trying to figure out how to sell a streetlight with 5G in it, and, you know, so it's.
Well, that may very well happen. The pole technology may very well incorporate this.
Right, and, you know, the pole, as you see on the top of the poles, that, you know, these companies are really clamoring to be here, and they know it's going to be difficult going through municipalities as FCC opened up, so it's a lot easier, but still, you know.
Okay. Thank you.
But the point is, we don't know everything now. We'll probably know a lot more in six months, and we'll know a lot more a year from now and so on, so we want to make sure we're reacting, able to react quickly.
Mr. Glantz, did you have a question?
Thank you. Nolan Glantz, Precinct 1, a couple of questions. First, you mentioned $100 as the, the legal fee for applications. Is there also a corresponding annual renewal fee or something like that that we'd be able to charge? And if so, what are the constraints on that?
We have built that into the policy, the policy, that yes, these permits that will be granted, it's a special permit in the case of a zoning planning board permit and just a permit from the Board of Selectmen, but they will need to be renewed annually, and through that renewal, we will charge another $100 application fee. It is important to note, and I neglected to mention this at the beginning, this $100 fee has to cover all of the local fees. All of the local approvals have to take place in the shot clock deadline. All of the local fees have to be covered by that $100. What we've set up in the policy is that to avoid just the draconian effect that that would have on the municipality, is we put in the policy that in order for an application to be complete, the applicant must have gotten all the other approvals first. The application will not be deemed complete if, for example, it needed a conservation commission order of conditions, and they don't have it yet.
If I may?
Go ahead.
Second question, is it possible for multiple carriers, transponders, to be within one enclosure, or do we have regulations around that so that, because if the first carrier comes along, we approve a bunch of them, they're all going to be coming in, and we're going to wind up with similar but different, kind of scattered and staggered and so forth versus aggregating? I don't know if aggregating is better or worse aesthetically, but is that part of the guidelines as well?
No, because right now it can't be. We wish it was, and we wish we could have people co-locate, just like, we asked the same question, if you can co-locate on a tower, why can't you co-locate on a pole? They can kind of, but all the infrastructure's all different, so we have, how many carriers? Seven carriers?
Today?
Yeah, today. So anyway, so when we looked at this, we said, "Okay, if applicant one wants seven, then 60, then maybe 100, and you have six other carriers." We were like, "Oh, my goodness, this is massive. We need to mobilize fast to make sure whatever this is, we have a handle on it." So, I mean, really, that's what this all is. We don't have only answers, we're trying to ask all the questions that you're asking to all the providers. There isn't a, a universal antenna right now. In Europe, they're looking at that, they haven't looked at it here yet. We're trying to keep our ears to the ground on that one and try to do the best we can, so.
Mr. Tigas?
Also, just, it's sort of related to your question, Nolan. As far as the certification, the annual certification, we put in that, that it has to be recertified annually, so they can't leave obsolete equipment. And, you know, if something new comes along, they can't just put it up next to their old stuff. They have to certify that their equipment, whatever's on the pole or wherever it may be, is still functional.
Thank you.
Mr. Stam?
Steve Stam, Precinct 4. Just a couple interface questions. A lot of these are going on existing poles. Those poles were designed, had, were designed for a certain wind load, say, you know, 100 miles an hour for a hurricane, or 120, whatever it is, and these are way up, and, and so you're creating additional resistance. So the question that I have is, whose responsibility is that? And, and also, if it affects the services, who's, you know, what, what do they bear? And does the town bear any liability associated with that because the town is approving them?
Mr. Tigas?
Would have, the applicant has to submit documentation that they've had that, the pole is capable of taking the equipment, I think it has, it has to be an engineer, structural engineer has to certify that the pole can withstand this new equipment with the existing equipment on it.
Mr. Moderator, could I ask, whose structural engineer? Is it the, the person who designed the pole and responsible, or is it the applicant?
It would be the applicant.
I, I would caution you that that's the wrong answer, that you need the person who's responsible for the pole to approve the installation. Otherwise, we're going to be in trouble.
Mr. Tigas?
Just to follow up, they have to, the applicant would have to lease the pole from the company, so the, the responsibility would probably lie on the owner of the pole to also make sure it's, they wouldn't want somebody else's equipment on the pole that they know is going to not handle the extra load.
Please close the loop, probably doesn't do it.
Mr. Eiler?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Eiler, Precinct 6. I was very impressed with what the committee did on this. You know, if you look at the backup, there, there's a good 50 pages of, of policies that have been developed. Virtually everything I could think of that should be in there, they had put in there. Virtually all the questions that have come up here, they considered the issue of dealing with double poles, the aesthetics, renewal fees, validating every year that the equipment is operational or it has to be removed within a specified period of time. The size, the load analysis was in there, so they did an extremely thorough job on this. I, I think this is a case where it makes total sense to have the bylaw effectively ceding the control from town meeting to a very nimble authority that seems pretty well-aligned with our interests, so that they can respond very quickly to deal with situations that come in. I, I went to one of the meetings where they're reviewing the Verizon application, and there's a lot that, that's in these applications, and the idea that you have to respond within 10 or whatever days is completely ridiculous, but we're, we're hamstrung by the FCC regulations in terms of what we can, can limit, and I think they've done a very good job of limiting that, what can be done as much as possible within the policies. So this is really well-done, so thank you.
Mr. Rossi?
Gene Rossi, Precinct 2. Could you please tell me, how many feet above the sidewalk would these be placed on the poles?
Is there an answer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, I don't have a absolute question, but I know, or answer, but one of the, what we did talk about that exists in the policy, is it, it's 10 feet or 12 feet? 12, anyway, that needs to be at minimum of 12 feet, can't impede site distance, so if that 12 feet is in some way, in a location that would impede site distance on a hill or up a hill or on a corner. So I just wanted to show this, because this just showed you kind of what, what was, what. What you see here, this is just a picture that was easy to kind of talk about the different elements that are part of these. The electric meter and the, is that box that you see on the side, that's the thing that's going to be the lowest, either, the lowest thing on the pole and/or that piece is going to be on the ground or under that thing that looked like a mailbox that we saw in the other picture. So our preference is that it's not on the pole, that it's either inside the pole, in some way that's not a box, but some sort of enclosure that wraps around the pole, or underground or off, out of the travelway.
Well, the reason for my question is, I'm concerned about radiation emissions. Has there been any study on how much radiation these things are going to be putting out?
I'm not aware of any studies that have shown what the radiation emissions are of this particular kind of technology. What I am aware is that the FCC, actually, the legislature, the Congress, through the Telecommunications Act, does not permit municipalities to take that specific factor into account in approving or disapproving these types of facilities.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator, Paul Gerard, Precinct 5. My question is, is there any requirement to notify residents within a proximity of any wireless installation? And if not, is it easy enough to find out, say, on the town website, where they're located?
Mr. Tigas?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Yeah, we, we kept that in the policy, that they have to notify the buddies.
Mr. Frost?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Matt Frost, Precinct 3. If the telecom company doesn't renew a pole license, how does Burlington turn off the equipment and have it removed? Does Burlington have any control over that, or does the thing just stay up there forever?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Tigas, go ahead.
Now, what they would have to do is, if they, if they don't recertify, they'd have to recertify to use that equipment.
What if they don't renew the license and pay the additional, the annual fee? What, what does Burlington, what can Burlington do?
I'm not sure exactly where we have it, but they're required to remove their equipment. It's somewhere in the 60-plus pages that we.
What if they don't? What if they don't?
They have 60 days to remove it, if not, it's a $100 a day fine.
Okay, now, how, how does that get enforced?
We would probably have to go through the courts on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mark Woods, Precinct 7. There's a comment in here about cooling fans. Do they have to be encapsulated in the structure, or do they hang outside the structure? And it said there, low noise profile, so if you don't think it's low noise, can you have them removed, or how does that work?
Are you in the policy or the design regs?
Let's see, it's page.
Anyway, all, overall, the, the general intent is to minimize any nuisance that would come out of these, minimize aesthetic, kind of aesthetic nuisance, and if there's noise that comes out of cooling fans, to make sure they're either placed, this infrastructure is such that they're as quiet as possible, or they're placed in a manner that is respectful of the neighborhood. So totally removed, I don't know enough about the infrastructure to know if it's possible to totally remove them or not, but the, the goal is to.
Is there any requirement regarding birds, that they're safe, you know, they're not going to harm animals or? going to harm animals, or we don't care?
It's not that we don't care at all, but not directly do we address that within the aesthetic regulations.
Mr. Murphy. You're the only hand up. Okay, the question's been moved. All those in favor? Of moving the question? Opposed? Now it brings us to the motion. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? It's a clear majority, the motion passes. That's for Article 3. In a minute. First of all, first I need a motion to adjourn the special town meeting. All in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, there being a quorum present, we will open the annual town meeting. Now, we have to go through the usual steps. The moderator will entertain a motion to allow us to vote by raising our hands instead of by standing. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Moderator will entertain a motion to appoint Frank Monaco as deputy moderator. Should I not be able to continue? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, that passes. And we need a motion to, should we not complete the warrant tonight, that we will return Wednesday at 7:30? All those in favor? Opposed? Done. Anything I forgot? All right. Okay, now, we need a motion to take things out of order. I'd like a motion to take up Article 38, followed by Article... Excuse me? 39, sorry. 39 followed immediately by Article 31. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, is this one I have to read? No. Where's my pile of motions? Okay, Article 39, Town of Burlington Policy, Application for Small Cell Wireless Insolations. It is hereby requested that Article 39 be moved as printed in the warrant. Do we have a report from the planning board on this one? Ms. Kastner.
I will speak on behalf of the planning board. The planning board was unanimously in support of the proposal.
Thank you. And I assume you're going to present whatever we need to present?
Mr. Moderator, I have nothing new to present. But if anyone has any questions, I'm here.
Okay, so this is the article that... Okay, this is a zoning article, so this applies to things not in the public way. Okay, Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. Mr. Parsons.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The zoning bylaw review committee voted 7-0-0 to recommend this for largely the same reasons as the general bylaw review committee recommended. The general bylaw amendment, because the technology is new, because there are no standards, the best way to approach this, given the situation, is to permit the planning board to exercise its authority in the same way as the selectmen will exercise their authority in public rights away. The planning board will be responsible for the approval of the same rules and regulations on private parcels. Everything else is parallel.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Any questions from the body on this? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. This is a zoning article, so two-thirds required. All those in favor? All those opposed? Vote is unanimous, motion passes. Thank you. Article 31, Selectment's Small Cell Peer Review. It is hereby requested that Article 31 be moved as follows. To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $35,000 for the purpose of funding a small cell peer review with respect to small wireless facilities seem to be spent under the direction of the town administrator. Mr. Tegus.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Essentially, this is the money for the RF engineer. We contract with an RF engineer. We anticipate, as other towns do, multiple applicants submitting multiple applications with even more locations. It's uncharted territory. We don't know how busy we're going to be. We don't know the impact on the staff. So we're asking for a little money aside to, you know, at least this year, get an idea of what to expect. This is basically the cost of the RF engineer, because we certainly know $100 isn't going to cover it, so...
Thank you, Mr. Tegus. Vote of the selectmen?
I believe this was 5-0.
Thank you. Ways and Means?
Ways and Means voted 5-0-0 to support small cell review.
Thank you. 5-0-0, that's not a quorum, Roger. Mr. Riggs, your vote was 5-0-0?
Let me repeat that. Ways and Means voted 12-0-0 in favor.
That one I like better. Thank you. Okay. Questions from the body on this? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Now back to where we left off. Fund the Administrative and Professional Compensation Plan. To see if the town will vote to adopt the Administrative and Professional Compensation Plan for FY 2020 and transfer from the FY 2020 negotiated settlement account the sum of $92,463 for the purpose of funding the plan, seem to be expended under the appropriate Ways and Means? Mr. Riggs?
Ways and Means voted 8-0-0 in favor, and it was a light evening.
Selectmen have a vote on this? Mr. Priest?
Selectmen voted 4-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Sagarino, you're going to present on it?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a couple of notes for the body. One of the things that always bothered me when I was the town accountant was that we seemed to have gotten away from the habit of having contracts negotiated prior to the fiscal year for which they applied. So we had gotten into the habit of being behind on those. So one of the things that I wanted to do when I was... Took over the position was to sort of get back on that schedule where we were actively and aggressively trying to settle our contracts before they expired. I'm happy to say that we do have a bunch of contracts for you this evening. It was a lot of work that went into it. We could not have done that without also a lot of work with our employees negotiating on the other side of the table. I can tell you that I'll never come before you and tell you that we got a good deal. I don't think that the system is set up for a good deal, but I do believe that we have fair contracts that we negotiated with, and I would urge you to support those this evening. I think you'll notice that there's a similar fact pattern on all of them, with the exception of the fire contracts, a little bit different. And with that, I will just... I'd like to turn it over to the new Assistant Town Administrator, John Denizio, who's been with us since Thanksgiving.
Mr. Denizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Denizio, Town Accountant, Assistant Town Administrator. I just want to reiterate Mr. Sagarino's sentiments about thanking all those involved in negotiations. It's not easy, and to do it over and over, it feels like you're banging your head against the wall. And everybody was able to show up, be professional, and I feel like we have fair deals. So it's my pleasure to present the next few articles. I was going to do a video, but Whitney said that it camera adds 10 pounds, so I thought maybe slides might be better for us. So the first article, Article 22, is to fund the AMP compensation plan. The AMP group is not a recognized union. It's a group made up of department heads, assistant department heads and managers. It covers 41 personnel. The group is fairly simple. The deal is fairly simple. It's 2.5% on all steps and all grades. This would become from a transfer from FY 20 negotiated settlement, so it wouldn't have an effect on the budget. And the transfer amount would be $92,463.
Questions from the body? Mr. Glantz.
Thank you, Nolan Glantz, Precinct 1. Would it be possible if we run through this summary information for all of them and then go back and vote them? Because rather than doing a piecemeal, I have a hard time weighing kind of the different deals and how they kind of came about. That would give... I don't know about everyone else, but that would give me a better sense of the scope of the settlements, that if we can talk about them all together, then vote them.
Is that acceptable to the body? I don't hear anybody complaining. Okay, so let's run through all of them, then we'll come back and take up the details.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the next group is Article 23, and this is the, again, and not a recognized union. This is the part-time compensation plan. These are part-time workers that work less than 20 hours a week, so they're not covered by union contracts. And it also covers seasonal employees, some of that might work for DPW or REC just during the summer, or library or something like that. This is 2%... I mean, 2.5% on the part-time rates and 2% on the seasonal rates. These are rates that we try to stay competitive with minimum wage, so that we can make sure we get enough workers to complete the mission. This would again come from FY 20 negotiated settlements. The transfer amount would be $4,120. Again, transfer from FY 20, so it wouldn't have any effect on the budget in front of you. Following one is Article 24, which is the Fund the Police Patrolman's Contract. So this is a recognized union. This group is... Covers the 50 or so patrol personnel in our police station. This would be for a one-year deal. And the compensation components of this deal would be, again, a 2.5% increase. That's the pattern that Mr. Sagarino was talking about. That would be on all steps. There's also a $1 adjustment for the detail rate. That's the rate paid by outside contractors to have roadwork or things like that. There's some non-compensation package. Some things that are included in the deal would be language changes, adjustments or clarifications around vacation leave, sick leave, FMLA leave, equipment replacement, and how we distribute pay stubs, trying to move to an electronic distribution of pay stubs. This would again come from FY 20 negotiated settlements, and the transfer amount would The next contract is Article 26, Fund the Firefighters Association contract. This one has been a long time coming. I know this board has had several articles in front of you the past few town meetings about ambulance services. What this contract, us finally settling this contract, does is allow us to move forward to that, to actually implement advanced life-saving services in our ambulance program. So it's quite a milestone for us. This is, covers all uniformed firefighters, except for the chief and assistant chief of 64. The agreement's for three years. It's for FY 18, 19, and 20. That's last year, this year, and next year. The compensation package includes 2.5% increase on all the steps and columns. And for FY 20, since it's the implementation year of ALS services, along with that implementation comes some changes in stipends and some additional stipends around the areas of ambulance service and supervision. The non-compensation package includes some language changes and clarifications for grievance notification, staffing levels on shifts, sick leave, education incentives, and there's some added language on prior service and how we distribute pay stubs. So this one is a little different for the transfer. This transfer would come from two spots. For the FY 20 amount would come from the FY 20 negotiated settlements, and the prior years for FY 18 and this current year would come from our prior year negotiated settlements that have carried forward because we didn't have a deal. So those two amounts are $330,652 for prior years, and $900... I mean, I'm sorry, $296,095 for the current year. The current year is a little bit more than typical because it's the implementation year of ALS. It adds in those stipends for ALS services and for supervision. And we expect that, moving forward, this body has approved to establish the Ambulance Receipts Reserve Fund. We expect that, moving forward, when we submit the fire budget, there'll be an offset from that to help cover additional costs of the ALS services. Article 27, DPW contract. This is a three-year contract that would cover next year and the following two years. This is for our DVW workers' union. There's about 45 workers that are covered by this union. The compensation package includes a wage adjustment of 2.5% for next year, 2.5% for the following year, and 1.75% in the last year. In the last year, we also, halfway through the year, we phase in an added step at the top, a new step on January 1st, 2022. The non-compensation package includes some language changes, clarifications, adjustments around vacation leave, sick leave, how we distribute paychecks, some summer hours, and scheduling for water meter replacement, how we're going to handle that. The FY 20 portion of this contract would come from a transfer from FY 20 negotiated settlements. Transfer amount would be $77,891. The last one is Article 28, the BMEA contract. The BMEA is our largest union, covers over 100 people. This is a three-year deal for next year and the following two years. The compensation package is the same as the DPW that I just explained, and the non-compensation is just some clarification on notification for sick leave and vacation leave, and the same thing with the electronic payroll. Transfer for next year... Transfer for next year would come from FY '20 negotiated settlements, and the transfer Go back to the first one?
Yes, please.
Should I stop doing that?
All right, so let's go back to Article 22. And we'll, we'll have to go through each one individually, so if you have specific questions on that contract, you can ask them then when we get to that, that article. Okay, so Article 22, Ways and Means.
Ways and Means voted 8-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Further questions from the body? Seeing none? Put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 23, Fund the Part-Time Compensation Plan. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the FY '20/20 negotiated settlement the sum of $4,120 for the purpose of funding the part-time salary plan for under 20 hours for FY '20/20, seem to be expended under the appropriate authorities. Ways and Means.
Ways and Means voted 8-0-0 in favor of the part-time plan.
Mr. Glance.
Thank you, Noel Grant, Precinct 1. Sorry, this question isn't specific to this one, but are there any groups or departments or other unions or contracts that are not in this warrant, or is this all of them?
Mr. Denizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sorry about that. I should have said at the beginning, there's one union that is not included in here. We weren't able to get an agreement in time. That's the police command staff. So that's...
Follow, if I may?
Go ahead.
Can you give me a sense of the scope, how many people we're talking about there?
Mr. Denizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That's, I think, between 14 and 16 people.
Thank you.
Further questions? Okay, Selectmen have a vote on this? Mr. Priest.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Vote was 4-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Questions from the body? All right, let's vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 25 is withdrawn.
24.
25. Am I skipping again?
Yes, you are.
Ah, I just want to go home. All right, Article 24. Fund the Burlington Police Patrolmen's Association Contract. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the FY '20/20 negotiated settlement the sum of $95,901 for the purpose of funding the Burlington Police Patrolmen's Association Contract for FY '20/20, seem to be expended under the appropriate authority. Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Selectmen voted 3-0, 3-0-1 in favor, sorry.
Thank you. Ways and Means?
Ways and Means voted 10-0-0.
Questions from the body? Mr. Monaco?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. Probably should know this, this is a one-year contract, right? Why did we end up with a one on this one?
Mr. Denizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This union in particular was very anxious to have a contract done before town meeting. It's been quite some time since they've had a successor agreement in place before the expiration of a current deal, and we were tired to be able to do that. We did, we, we wouldn't have had enough time to get a three-year deal done.
Mr. Stam?
Steve Stam, Precinct 4. There was a couple of items that showed up on a number of those summaries, and I'd ask for further explanation on them. And that is changes to summertime hours, changes to sick time benefits, and changes to vacation time benefits. Could you explain each of those?
Mr. Denizio, please.
Mr. Moderator, for this, for the patrolman union specifically to this article, the changes around sick and vacation were some changes for us to be notified earlier of how many, how much time the patrolman expects to be buying back the following year. And we were, one of the changes was to, to create a number of days that could be used for family sick time. It was to sort of memorialize a current practice when someone, when someone's going to be out sick because of a member of their family, rather than themselves. In the summertime that you asked about doesn't apply to this contract, it's the DPW contract, but that's, our DPW group works adjusted hours in the summer only from Memorial Day to Labor Day, where they work through lunch in a longer day on Monday or Thursday, and then get out at a similar time that Town Hall gets out, rather than working till 3:30.
Mrs. Zabelotny?
Ernie Zabelotny, Precinct 5. There was an item for replacement of equipment for the, this contract, I believe. Could you tell us what equipment is included?
Mr. Denizio.
Mr. Moderator, this is to memorialize the current practice of the equipment that a patrolman would, would wear on their body or carry with them, the standard equipment that every patrolman would have, handcuffs, holders for handcuffs, holsters, things like that. It would be so that the, the update of that would be at the direction of the chief and at his discretion of when and how often you would need to replace that.
Anything additional? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Article 24 is passed. Now we can do Article 25, withdrawn. Article 26, To Fund the Burlington International Firefighters Association Contract. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the FY '20/20 negotiated settlement the sum of $296,955 for the purpose of funding the approved Burlington International Firefighters Association Contract for FY '20/20, and to vote to transfer the sum of $330,652 from prior year's negotiated settlements for the purpose of funding the approved Burlington International Firefighters Association Contract for FY '20/18 and FY '20/19. Okay. Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Selectmen voted 3 in favor, 1 abstain.
Thank you. Ways and Means? Mr. Riggs?
Ways and Means voted 10, 9-0-1 in favor.
Thank you. Questions from the body?
Thank you, Noel Grant, Precinct 1. Can you tell me the balance in the prior year's account, and are there any other contracts remaining from prior years?
Mr. Denizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The balance of that is around $800,000. There are no contracts that need to be negotiated from prior years. However, there may be some obligations we have for as far as buyouts when someone wants to retire or something like that. But there would be no contracts that would come out of that.
Ms. Hughes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Betsy Hughes, Precinct 7. I believe this is the contract you mentioned, there was an issue on prior service credit, and I wanted to understand what specifically that was and the impact potentially on pension liability.
Mr. Denizio, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To the first part of the question, that is specifically for when we hire a new firefighter, paramedic, the town administrator can decide to give that person years of service credit for working somewhere else. So this would be a lateral transfer of someone that comes from another department somewhere and comes to us. The current contract doesn't allow for that.
Microphone, please, Ms. Hughes. Thank you.
So therefore, we're giving service credit that would be credited towards pension and other service-related benefits, so have you calculated what the effect would be on pensions? Because I understand that's a concern of this body.
Mr. Denizio, do you have an answer for that? Oh, Mr. Curtin. You came for a reason. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The prior year's service is not something that will be the responsibility of the town of Burlington. Whatever other community that person is transferred in from, they would be responsible for the prior year's service liability.
Thank you. Further questions? Mr. Marchesi?
Steve Marchesi, Precinct 3. Paul, John, I'd like to thank, this is a little more in-depth than previous presentations on contracts, so congratulations on that. My question is, John, would you mind going in a little bit deeper when you have the, like for an example, the stipends, and you had supervision on this? Can you break that down into with dollar amounts and what it's going to be over the life of the contract on a yearly basis going forward? And then, so I don't have to stand up on the DPW, you talked about adding an additional step. Would you put numbers to that when it comes time for me, please?
Mr. Denizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On the first question about the stipends for the fire, so what these stipends are is for the, now that we're going to be doing ALS services, the stipend that we, the only stipend we had in the contract before was for a regular basic EMT. So we had to create a new stipend, and obviously, more service means the stipend was going to be higher. So that cost of that stipend for next year would be, which would be the implementation year, and it's going to be a phased-in approach, is about $150,000 next year. We do plan to, as I said earlier, help to offset some of that cost in the ongoing years with transfers from Receipts Reserved Account. As far as the DPW and BMEA contracts, the added step, the, the spread between steps in that, in both of those contracts is about 4% in the implementation year. It's going to cost us less than, probably closer to 1% because we're only putting half the step in at the halfway point of the year, and then the remainder of the step in at the last day of the contract. So it costs less in that third year of the contract, but has the whole cost of that baked into the first year of a successor agreement, where that would be, that step would now be 4% like the rest of them.
Anything additional? Seeing nothing? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 27, Fund the Department of Public Works Contract. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the FY '20/20 negotiated settlement the sum of $77,891 for the purpose of funding the approved collective bargaining agreement between the town of Burlington and the Burlington Public Works Contract for FY '20/20. Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It was 3 in favor, 1 abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Riggs, Ways and Means?
Ways and Means voted 10-0-0 in favor.
Questions from the body? Seeing noth- Mr. Maury?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bruce Maury, Precinct 1. Just a general question, I should probably know this, but again, there are several of these that are two years in arrears. There are a couple that are two years in the future. There are some that are just fiscal year, fiscal year 2020. Can you comment on that? Is it contract-specific for each of the unions, is I guess my first question? And then secondly, in the future, if we can get some kind of quantification of how many people are affected by each of these, would be really helpful back up as well. Thank you.
Mr. Denizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're up again.
Thank you. So the, the only contract that was in arrears is the fire contract. Typically, we would, we would shoot to try to do three-year contracts with unions. The first two, the AMP and the part-time, they're not unions, so we really can only do one year. So I, I think the police command, we would try to do a three-year, and like I said from the beginning, the, the patrol officers were very anxious to have an agreement in place. We're going to continue to working with them right away. We're not going to wait until that expires and do it again. So I think as a rule, we would shoot for three-year contracts.
Any additional questions? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Article 27 passes. Article 28, Fund the Burlington Municipal Employees Association Contract. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the FY '20/20 negotiated settlement the sum of $155,472 for the purpose of funding the approved collective bargaining agreement between the town of Burlington and the Burlington Municipal Employees Association Contract for FY '20/20. Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This was 3 in favor, 2 abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Riggs, Ways and Means vote?
Ways and Means voted 10-0-0 in favor.
Questions from the body?
Gene Rossi, Precinct 2. Regarding these phase-in, this phase-in step increase, are the employees who are at the top step now in fiscal '19 going to be able to get back payment once this comes into effect? Because a couple of years ago, we added three steps to the BMEA contract, and those that hadn't had, had step increases in three years, many got 9% raises that year.
Mr. Denizio.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. No, the, the step would go into effect on 1-1-2022, and there would be no retroactive pay for that. So anybody that was at the top step at that point would move to the new top step. The top step at that time.
Anything additional? Okay, let's vote on it. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Article 29, School Community Custodial Services. To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $44,753 to be expended under the direction of the Burlington School Committee for the purpose of community custodial fees to fund events which are not school events in order to cover Burlington scout organizations, PTO meetings, boosters, citations, youth basketball, youth volleyball, youth baseball association, pop Warner, hockey, soccer, and skating associations, and other not-for-profit Burlington civic organizations. Ways and Means?
Ways and Means voted 12-0 to support these funds to pay for custodial support only when custodial support is not ordinarily on, has regular access at school for these organizations.
Is there a report, a vote from the school committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The school committee supported this, 5-0-0.
Thank you. Questions from the body on this? It's one we see every year. Seeing none? Oh, Mr. Zabelotny, sorry.
I'm easy to overlook.
Excuse me, name and precinct?
Ernie Zabelotny, Precinct 5.
Thank you.
For a reason which we do not understand yet, is that this item is brought before Capitol Budget Committee, which voted 7-0 to support this. We'd also like to compliment the individuals who went to the trouble of detailing each of the events and breakdown for each school. It was nice to know what we were voting for.
Thank you, Mr. Zabelotny. Didn't mean to overlook you. Any further questions on this? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Article 29 passes. Article 30, School Seasonal Employees. To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash- free cash the sum of $125,000 to pay for expenses associated with the school department's seasonal employees. Mr. Riggs, Ways and Means?
Ways and Means voted 11 in favor, one opposed, one abstention.
School committee? Dr. Conti?
Mr. Moderator, the school committee was 5-0 in support of this article.
Would you like to talk?
The, this is a one-time jumpstart of the summer custodial program. These hours are normally funded through the building rental account. The school department had rented one of their wings to Bay Path College for many years, and that brought in a certain amount of revenue that we then spent on upkeep of the buildings during the summer. Bay Path moved out two years ago, and we spent down the account, and we didn't get a new tenant until this year. So we need funding from free cash to bring in, we bring in about 45, usually recent graduates. They're paid, they have been paid about $11 an hour. This is, I think this summer, we're going to pay them $12 an hour to come in, and they're critical workers to get all of our buildings clean and ready for the start of the school year. We only have about seven or eight weeks to get all that work done. We have a new tenant now that's just completing their first year, and so moving forward, we want to get back to our past practice of having the building rental fees cover the summer workers. So this is again a one-time to get us through the loss of a tenant and into a new tenant.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Questions? Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roger Bell, Precinct 6. Dr. Conti, I'm just not clear in this specific item as to why it wasn't included in your, in the budget as opposed to taking it as a separate item.
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Because Mr. Bell, it was a one-time bridge because typically, again, we just had done without a tenant for two years, and we didn't have the revenue coming in to cover the building maintenance or summer costs for the summer, for the summer employment. So again, we won't have needed this money moving forward. The rental fees will cover the upkeep of the buildings and the summer salaries.
I understand why you need it. I just, I'm still not clear why it wasn't part of the school budget to begin with.
Dr. Conti?
Because again, this was summer work, and again, it was a one-time, and we didn't have the revenue to cover the summer workers. So we're looking again for the bridge between tenants. And we had given up the rental space when Bay Path left. The space had been utilized by other town departments for swing space, so it wasn't available to rent for those two years, and we spent down the rental income, and we're asking this body to support us for one year. Now that we have a new tenant, we can continue our past practice of using the rental income to hire summer help. This help is critical. We need this help to get the buildings clean.
Thank you.
Mr. Zabelotny.
May we impute from your comments that the rental income is about $125,000?
Dr. Conti?
Through the moderator. Yes, sir. It's right around there. The lab administrative offices, which is renting the current space, I think the lease is roughly around $65,000 a year, and we usually get, again, roughly a range around that for the other rentals that we, that other people who utilize the building. So we're, we can typically cover our summer labor costs through building rentals.
Anything additional? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 32. Fourth of July Parade. To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $20,000 to pay for expenses associated with the annual Fourth of July Parade. Mr. Riggs, Ways and Means?
Ways and Means voted 13-0-0 to support this $20,000. This is in addition to all of the funds that are raised from businesses and other volunteers to put on the Fourth of July Parade.
Do the selectmen have a vote on this? Mr. Runyon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Selectmen voted 5-0-0 in favor.
Questions on the article? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 33. Article 33 is moved as printed in the warrant. Mr. Riggs, Ways and Means?
It always gives Ways and Means pleasure to accept money, and in this case, the will of Marshall Simons has been, is continuing to be very generous in their contributions and their support for Simons Park. Vote was 12-0-0.
Recreation Commission. Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Ms. Kevin Sullivan, Chairperson of the Rec Commission. It was 5-0-0. It's awesome that we get this money every year, and it would be silly to say no.
Questions from the body? Seeing none. Who's in favor of accepting money? Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Motion passes. Brings us to Article 34. Cybersecurity Strategy. Article 34 is moved as printed in the warrant. All right. Board of Selectmen have a vote on this?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Board of Selectmen voted 5-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Anybody else, any other committee look at this? Michelle, we'll go right ahead.
Precinct 4. Put this forth together with Christine Warren, also Precinct 4. We were looking essentially at the report that the Information Systems Advisory Committee did a couple of years back. We thought there was a lot of benefits. Looking where we stand today from an information security perspective, there's been a lot of things that have happened over the last years. I'm sure that everyone has heard or experienced, hopefully not, but some of you may have experienced cybersecurity incident happening to companies and municipalities. Most recent one was Baltimore, which was hit with a massive ransomware attack, causing millions and millions of dollars of damage. We feel it's important that we start to develop a strategy around this, which would really mean at this point in time, putting together a, the ISAC again, the guidance and with the help of the Board of Selectmen, developing over the next few months, a strategy that we would present to town meeting in January next year to vote upon with regards to further action that should or should not be taken. I feel it's a good move on our part because at the end of the day, it shows that this body, as well as the executive bodies, do take this seriously. I would hate to be in a position where something were to happen over the next months, quarters, years, what have you, and we would be standing there without ever having thought about this. So the whole idea of doing some due diligence around developing a strategy and then ultimately figuring out how to vote on that, I think is critically important, and I would love to see you support this. Thanks.
Thank you. Questions? Nolan, Mr. Glance.
Thank you, Nolan Glance, Precinct 1. So who's going to be performing this study? Is it current staff, or are we going to be needing some kind of consultant help?
Excellent question. So we will initially reform the, or reinstate the Information Systems Advisory Committee that we had years back that seemed to be working quite nicely to really prepare a next steps kind of a thing. So initially, this will be drawn upon the good citizens of Burlington to volunteer a little bit of their time. I've talked to a few already. I think some would be ready to do this. I would also volunteer to try to find others. If anyone in here is interested, let me know. But the idea is really by the end of, by the end of this year, December, have a warrant article to be put in front of the town that speaks in a little bit more detail. I think we should take this deliberately. Just coming up with this, like, I need $50,000 to do this or that. It does not make sense. Let's think about this first. Let's develop a plan, and then let's present this to town committee. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Mr. Monaco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. So that does make sense. It answers part of what my question is. So does anyone remember, was the ISAC original committee appointed by the moderator? How did we get it in the first place?
Selectmen.
The selectmen. So the selectmen, I mean, the implication is many of the same people. They did a great job, but you will appoint. And the other implication is your goal is to bring something that's more definitive back in January, and it sounds like there's a potential for a January warrant article with funding.
Yeah.
So one would assume the source of funding for that's likely to be free cash, I would assume, but...
That would be the logical initial choice.
Yeah.
And we can definitely talk about this as part of like formulating the article.
Okay.
One thing just to add to this, obviously, we're doing this out of the Board of Selectmen because that's how we've done the information system, the Information Systems Advisory Committee before. But at the same time, would obviously be very open to other parts of executive government in the town to also jump on that bandwagon and have them, like libraries, whoever else would be interested in having us to take them into consideration for the overall plan, we'd be more than happy to do so as well.
Okay. Well, it makes sense for me to, you know, for a specific committee that isn't huge and maybe what you had before to drive it, bring in all the collaboration you need. But what we really need in January is to get an idea of what we're looking at for expenses in this fiscal year, like upcoming one, and whether there are recurring contract costs. So, thank you.
Absolutely. That's the plan.
Further questions? Mrs. Zabelotny.
On the advice of my personal cybersecurity consultant, who informs me, the most important thing to do is to realize that cybersecurity is a real and necessary thing. When you get to that point, you have a starting point. So I congratulate your efforts so far. Whatever I could do, I'd be happy to support you. The issue was, it really brought home in a number of our discussions with staff, the Treasury Department, the Clerk's Department, the ID Department. Each of them are spending time thinking about providing security for our internal systems. One comment that was made at a meeting was courtesy of Mr. Frost, "You mean there's real money in this?" And the answer is yes, and that describes why it is that we need cybersecurity strategy for the town.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any further questions? Ms. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Betsy Hughes, Precinct 7. I also applaud your effort on cybersecurity. I think it's critically important. You mentioned a committee that existed a number of years ago. I guess I would encourage you, cybersecurity is a very different thing, as you well know, and that people who are familiar with IT may not be expert in cybersecurity. So I'm hoping that you, this selectman, and you would consider opening it up to people who actually, Burlington's got a lot of really world-class experts in cybersecurity living here. So I think there's a pool of talent that would be great to take advantage of.
Yeah, definitely will do, and I can draw also my own network a little bit. Absolutely.
Anything else? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Article 35. Adoption of Stretch Energy Code to Section 9.0 Buildings. This article is moved as printed in the warrant. Board of Selectmen have a vote?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Vote was 5-0-0 in favor.
Bylaw review?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bylaw review voted 4-0 in favor.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, Article 36. Yeah, you're going to have to bear with me on this one. This is another one I have to read. Article 36. Amending Article 3, Section 1.2.5, Treasurer/Tax Collector Position. To see if the town will vote, based on the passage of the ballot question from the April 6, 2019 annual town election, to amend Article 3, Section 1.2.5 by removing a Treasurer/Tax Collector for a three-year term from the general bylaws and by renumbering the section as provided. One, Town Clerk for a five-year term. Two, Moderator for a one-year term. Three, five Selectmen for three-year terms. Four, three assessors for three-year terms. Five, five members of a school committee for three-year terms. Six library, excuse me, six, six library trustees for three-year terms. Seven, seven members of a planning board for five-year terms. Eight, five members of the Board of Health for three-year terms. Nine, two constables for three-year terms. Ten, four members of the Burlington Housing Authority for five-year terms. Eleven, three members of the Recreation Commission for three-year terms. Twelve, two members of the Shoshine Valley Technical School District Committee for three-year terms. And to amend Article 4, Roman numerals, you know, it's a while since I've looked at those, Section 1.8, by adding the Treasurer/Collector Position and Department to this section. After approval, this section will read as follows. 1.8, to exercise general control over the following departments, boards, and officers of the town. Department of Public Works, Engineering Department, Fire Department, Police Department, Building Department, Sealer of Weights and Measures, Town Accountant, Town Council, Town Treasurer/Collector Department, Animal Control Officer and pound. And to amend Article 4, Section 2.4.3, by adding the Treasurer/Collector Position and Department to this section, after approval, this section will read as follows. 2.4.3. Said administration shall appoint and remove, subject to Chapter 31 of the General Laws, all department heads, all officers and employees who come under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen except for the Town Accountant, Treasurer/Collector, and Town Council. Persons appointed by the administration to any statutory board, committee, or commission must be a resident and a registered voter of the town of Burlington. Okay. Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen voted 5-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Bylaw review, Mr. Tigges.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is basically to align our bylaws with the changes that happened at the last town election. So town meeting voted in favor of changing the elected position to an appointed position, as well as did the town voters at large in the last election. So now we have to reflect the actual change in our bylaws. Thank you. We voted 4-0 in favor.
Questions from the body? Ms. Pappas? Ms. Pappas?
Kelly Pappas, Precinct 5. Thank you, Michelle. It's a long night. In the election, did we vote that the Treasurer/Collector had to be a Burlington resident and registered voter in the town of Burlington?
The ballot question, from my recollection, was to change the elected position to an appointed position. I don't believe the residency was a required part of the ballot question.
That's not an issue, that we're doing this now?
No. What you're seeing here in this section does not pertain to the Treasurer/Collector position. What it's saying is that persons appointed by the administration to any board, committee, or commission must be a resident, but it does not include those three people that are just, those three positions that are just listed above.
Hence the word "except."
Yeah.
Thank you, Amy.
Anything additional? Mr. Monaco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. So in the Section 1.8, where we add the Treasurer/Collector into the, quote, "to exercise general control over the following departments, boards, and officers of the town." So I think it's not stated what the supervising authority is of each of those individuals, like Public Works, Engineering, blah, blah, blah. But the understanding was that the supervising authority of the Treasurer/Collector would be the selectman. How is that specified?
This section comes under the section of the selectman in the bylaws.
Okay, so now I'm even more confused. Doesn't the Town Accountant report to the Town Administrator?
No. If you read, can we go to the next part of it? Actually, it's in the amendment.
Adam?
Yes.
Basically, this section does say that they report to the Town Administrator as a day-to-day function, but it's overall under the umbrella of the selectman. So this is in the section, Article 4 covers the duties of the selectman. And then, so the day-to-day responsibility would be that they would work or report to the administrator, but that's all under the control of the selectman. All of these departments currently, this is how these other departments are currently working.
Right, right. I understand that. But it seems to me when we talked about this ballot question at town meeting before it went to the general electorate, the understanding was that the Treasurer/Collector would actually be hired and managed by the selectman. That was my understanding.
Right. That's what's covered under the third section.
The third?
2.4.3, this next section on, it's not as written in the...
I see.
So this third section is where it comes into the discussion, and that's the exception that had to be put in to say that these are the three people, these are the three positions that the selectman actually hire.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
My misunderstanding?
No problem.
Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You're very kind. John Eiler, Precinct 6. Just wanted to make sure I completely understood what Mr. Monaco is getting at there. If I read these two parts correctly, I believe the Board of Selectmen have hiring and firing authority over a Treasurer/Collector, but the day-to-day management is under a Town Administrator.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything additional? Seeing nothing. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 37, Adoption of General Law, Chapter 40, Paragraph 3, or Section 3, by the town of Burlington, Massachusetts, Amendment to Town General Bylaws. This article is moved as printed in the warrant. Okay. Do we have a vote of the school committee? Dr. Conti.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. School committee voted 5-0 in favor of this.
Mr. Tigges.
Bylaw review voted 4-0 in favor. The Mass Municipal, sorry, Mass Modernization Act, which was passed about a year or two ago, requires these types of accounts to be listed in the bylaws if they want to exist. Thank you.
Dr. Conti.
Mr. Moderator, we worked with the Town Administrator and Town Council to put this in. As Adam said, the bylaw committee, I think this was part of the Municipal Modernization Act of a couple of years ago, that allows the school committee to take rental income and spend it on other buildings in the district. So we mentioned the lab rents offices in one wing of the high school. We can use that rental income. This has to be the mechanism that we use that rental income to pay, for instance, summer help to work on Pine Glen. So that's required by this Municipal Modernization Act.
Ways and Means, did you vote on this, Roger?
No, Ways and Means did not take a vote.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Article 38. Article names, Article 12, Plan Development District. This article is moved as printed in the warrant, thankfully. Planning Board. Sorry, Jack, did we wake you up?
No, I sleepwalk. Planning Board was unanimous and supported this article.
Thank you. Did anybody else review this? Bylaw review? Oh, zoning bylaw review, excuse me. Sorry. Obviously, Sherry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sherry Ellis, Precinct 3, and also on the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, we presented this article. It is a housekeeping article, basically to include the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee in their job to review text amendments, which the PDDs are part of. We voted 8-0 in favor of this article that we proposed.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Mr. Kildee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Kelly, Precinct 6. I'm just curious why the Grand View is included in that. As a PDD, can you explain that, please?
Ms. Ellis, or Ms. Kastner?
Grand View Farm was adopted as a Plan Development District in 2001 as part of the land swap rezonings that this body approved, and that's why it's included in the list.
Anything additional? Mr. Monaco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. I have one general question. There's a lot of housekeeping in here, which is great, little stuff, but it's important. And then there's the use of the word "and" to add the new body, the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, to all of the steps and processes where it used to be Planning Board and Land Use. So one thing I'd like to understand is, from a procedural point of view, in each of these steps where Land Use and now the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee participate, are votes of these committees rendered as a separate process, or are they just part of the general hearings? How does that work? So that's one general question. What's the process that these boards will weigh in? And I'm assuming that whatever the bylaw review committee does is not just a second pass at what Land Use does, that there's some distinction in what you're trying to do and what you're recommending on. So that's just an explanation. There's one specific thing I want to ask while I'm here, because I know the moderator will never call on me again because he wants to get out of here. And Chris Murphy's gonna move the question. So while I've got the chance, on 12.1.5.4 covenant agreement, if you look at that for just a second, so this is really explaining at a very high level how a covenant is done, I believe. And so it says, after special conditions have been approved by the Planning Board, blah, 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 the committee may request the Board of Selectmen to include any special conditions in the PDD rezoning article in a covenant agreement with the proponent. And then the proponent writes the agreement, which they believe will be in concert with what's being requested, and that's what comes forward. So the proponent submits a legal agreement that reflects these recommendations that came from these three bodies, Land Use, Planning, and now the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. And then the last sentence is the one where I get, I'm just curious, if not confused. It says, "If agreed to, the Board of Selectmen shall exercise the covenant agreement on behalf of the town." What constitutes an agreement? A vote of the Planning Board on the last draft of the covenant, or what? Who agrees to what here? That's what I just don't under. I'm worried that this is amorphous and that proponents, it's already difficult to get a PDD. I think we might be making it even a little bit more complex and arduous, and I'm not sure, if I were to read this, I'd know quite what that meant. If you could explain that. Thank you.
Ms. Kastner.
I will attempt to answer kind of broad questions from a kind of this level, but I don't want to answer questions specifically that are kind of more pointed toward the formation of Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. But first to the question of Zoning Bylaw Review versus Land Use versus Planning Board. So there's, in the rewrite of the Plan Development District, Article 12 in 2012, 2011 or 12, a lot of what you're seeing now, including the section that was just read about the covenants and development agreements, was added to, at an attempt to provide for clarity in the bylaw itself. If you recall, the Land Use Committee was spearheading the initiative to rewrite Article 12, and that's when we added Land Use would also be a body to be part of the review process on Non-Plan Development District, added time with that. One of the things that, at least I've recommended the Planning Board, as well as Zoning Bylaw Review, is, and I recognize that the Land Use Committee isn't in front of this board or right now in kind of relook at what their duty is. But it has been explained, at least to us during, to this body by Zoning Bylaw Review, that they would be looking at zoning amendments, Land Use would be looking at zoning changes for projects, which is great. If that's the way it's gonna be, that's great. But I think Zoning Bylaw Review has done a pretty good job putting that within their policy statements, but Land Use really hasn't looked at that again. So to the question of, is it gonna be all these different independent groups that, you know, might be time-consuming to get through Land Use and Zoning Bylaw Review and Planning Board, we've been talking about trying to create joint meetings, but at the same time, I think the Land Use Committee under this body needs to kind of look at doing the same thing that Zoning Bylaw Review has done, and kind of look at their policies. So then we, as administrators, can say, okay, this is the policy for Land Use, this is a policy for Zoning Bylaw Review, to try to streamline that process as much as possible. Because Plan Development Districts are complicated. They're a really flexible tool, and they can get to, they can allow for really great outcomes, as well as beforehand negotiation of a lot of mitigation. So if you look at, and this is to answer the second point of the question, if you look at anything Northwest Park, Corporate Drive, which was one of the first PDs, you looked at, okay, if I'm gonna build X million of square feet, how much impact do I have? And what big giant project upfront can I do to try to mitigate that impact as I continue to develop? So you saw Long Middlesex Turnpike, a massive amount of roadway work. Corporate Drive, if you remember, we did their interchange. At the time, it was gonna be a whole, anyway, change of widening of Cambridge Street back in the late 80s. But anyway, my point is that that agreement of that upfront mitigation or of, you know, whether it's traffic or whether it's other types of mitigation or infrastructure work, is what's usually contained in that agreement and covenant. And the reason the sentence is with the selectman at the end is the, you know, on behalf of the town of Burlington, has an agreement with developer X. They're the signatories for the, that's the chief elected official. So that's the purpose for that sentence. But for any other questions, I defer to Sherry to say anything else.
Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think she explained that fairly well. The Zoning Bylaw Review Committee in general will be dealing with the textual, text amendments that come before you, changing the words, changing what they specifically, any developer would want to do. Stem, and the reason the Plan Development District was changed and made more rigorous was because we wanted, town meeting wanted to have control over that document, as opposed to the developer or proponent having control over that document. As far as, I think Kristin explained it pretty well, with Land Use, Planning, and the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, although we haven't gotten together since this has been enacted to really discuss, but we have talked informally about joint meetings. You don't want the proponents to have to come to three different bodies. They can make their initial presentation, and members from the committees can go. And then if it's purely text amendments, Land Use can certainly weigh in if they need to, but they don't really need to. There's no zoning change. If there is a change of zone from one zone to another, that's where Land Use has more of their charter involved in that. So I don't know if that explains it a little bit further, or complicates it even more.
Mr. Monaco.
Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. Okay, that helps. The one thing that I'm still, I'm concerned that a proponent, at some point, someone's gotta drive the bus on our side in the form of a real approval or an agreement that tells a proponent, yeah, we agree with what you want to do. And then they go away and actually write the covenant. They write a legal document, the final document. And I don't know how they get there without a vote from somebody that says, a vote on a draft or something. How do you stop it from being a big circle? That's what I'm concerned about.
Ms. Kastner.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As far as everyone we've ever done, I can't speak to the future, but it's always the special conditions are negotiated as part of the Planning Board process. We continue, and every amendment needs to come through the Planning Board, receive a recommendation at town meeting, whether it's up or down, and then come to this body. There's sometimes further negotiation from this body that's included in both zoning use table or special conditions, but often there isn't anything new that really comes up outside of the process, that process, once it's approved. So what you can, you'll see is, there's the zoning, zoning use table, special conditions. Those special conditions are within the zoning. Sometimes then you need, whether it's, you'll see some of, some projects we've done. You'll have kind of a developer's agreement with the town if it's work to be done within the right-of-way, that would reflect some of that, those special conditions. But there's multiple mechanisms that would require agreements between the developer and the town that would go beyond the special conditions of this body, but usually reflect everything that's been already discussed through that process. So if, that probably didn't answer your question 100%, but that's what's happened up to now. And we haven't seen a Plan Development District go through this process since it's been the new process yet. So I can't be 100% definitive.
Ms. Willard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct 4. Just to be clear, we're not adding in this, in Article 38, we're not adding Article 12, Section 1.5.4. All we're doing is adding the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee to part of that, to part of the doing is adding the zoning bylaw review committee to part of that, to part of the existing wording, correct?
Correct.
So we're not adding the covenant, the information, but thank you.
Yes, since this body created a zoning bylaw review committee, we have to put them in there someplace. Any further questions from the body? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? It's called two-thirds, it's passed. Now, this brings us to Article 10. Burlington Mall Road Ornamental Streetlights. To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash to some of $1,100,000 for the purpose of funding the Burlington Mall Road Ornamental Streetlight Upgrade Project. Mr. Riggs, I know you spoke on this once. Let's refresh everyone's mind, memory.
Ways and Means voters 11-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Zabelotny, capital budget.
As suggested by Millie Nash, we had a meeting at 6:30 today with Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Hayes. The vote that we took after a long discussion was three in favor and one opposed for those that were present. The two that were not present—
They don't get to vote, Mr. Zabelotny.
They don't get to vote, but I think it's appropriate to point, given the conditions—
It is not appropriate for them to be entered into the record.
Was three to three.
It's violation of open meeting law. The vote was three to one. Thank you.
From my perspective, this is discretionary spending, and we need to look at this discretionary spending as to how it impacts the taxpayer, especially the residential taxpayer. It's, roughly speaking, for every million dollars, the residential, average residential taxpayer's contribution is about $50. So we are voting, if we vote yes for this, to increase the tax bill by about 1% for the average residential.
Mr. Zabelotny.
On the other hand, this is—
Are you speaking for yourself, or for your committee?
Yes, I'm speaking for myself.
Well, then, you have to please sit down and get recognized as yourself.
Fine.
Thank you. Let's not confuse committees with personal. Gets confusing. All right. Is there anything additional on this? Mr. Frost.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have three questions that I would like some clarification on. First, do all of our commercial districts have ornamental lighting currently?
Mr. Hayes.
Moderator, there is small sections here and there that have ornamental lighting, third half, fourth half. But, no, it's not the district. Small little pockets here and there.
So I'm wondering what the reasons are why we're favoring the mall road businesses with this special lighting.
Mr. Hayes.
I could walk you through, I have a quick presentation, seven slides, if I might answer some of the questions.
Yeah, okay. Can you wait with your questions for a minute, let Mr. Hayes?
Can I stick, can I keep the floor?
I'll recognize you again, Matt, don't worry.
Thank you.
Is there a selectman vote on this article?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Selectmen voted 5-0-0 in favor of this.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes.
Mr. Moderator. So Mall Road, this is a map of Mall Road that we all know and love. It runs from Middlesex Turnpike on your left-hand side, up to the right-hand side, Cambridge So Mall Road is the long diagonal line that runs from the lower left to the upper right. So this is Mall Road right here. So this is Cambridge Street, and down here is Middlesex So this was the vision. Back Bob Mercier, when he was a town administrator, he always thought the Mall Road wanted, needed an upgrade. It needed, it was the million-dollar mile, it was what Burlington's known for. Talk about Burlington, to someone out of town will say, oh, the Burlington Mall, or the Leahy Hospital, or any of the businesses along the Mall Road. So this is what we've got now. These are Cobra heads. You know, standard industrial lighting that you see all over town. This is what our vision was. These are, they're called dome-style luminaires. They're also known as top hats, because they kind of look like a top hat. This is what, how we want to upgrade the Burlington Mall Road. So we go from the Cobra heads, which originally had concrete medians, and then went to stone, and now half of them are either stone, or they're lumen-seeded. We want to be consistent with this type of lighting, as well as grass strip down the middle, all lumen seed. Not only is it beautification, but it's needed. We have failing infrastructure. The infrastructure out there is, it's got to be 1970s vintage. It's all direct burial wire. So the wire's in the ground, getting old, burns out. You can't pull it. You can't pull it through a conduit, you have to dig it. If you can't dig it, a lot of times, we just run them overhead, from light to light, which is, you know, adds to the, you know, adds to the ugliness out there. So this is like, I don't know if you can see the line there. This is down by Coles. We had to run it overhead because we couldn't find where the break was. The only repair to that is actually digging it and putting in conduit. We also have crumbling bases. So this is a base of a, of the light. It's on a concrete base. And you can see all around it, the concrete's all spalting, because it's been in the ground for 40 years, and the salt is attacking the concrete. So we've been replacing these bit by bit. You know, if the bases go, I've got some great photos, I didn't have them in the slide, but you know, you have to have a crane out there, you take the whole thing off, you dig the base up, you put it back together. A lot of work, and you know, right now, we're doing a piecemeal. Current status, we did a pilot. I know Tom Killey brought that up, a few, probably 10 years ago. We got $50,000 from Tom Meeting. And we did a little pilot. We did three lights in the intersection of South Bedford and the Mall Road. And that was in 2014. At the same time, the district and Leahy were redeveloping. So they graciously agreed to fund that portion, 25 lights. We don't know what their pricing is. We don't know, but I can tell you from what, our estimates is, they're about $20,000 each, including everything, including all your underground conduit, all your handholds, all your load centers, the whole nine adds. So they put 25 lights in, roughly spent half a million dollars. What's left to do is all, everything in pink is what we have left to do. That's 1.1 million. And I was asked to talk about costs. Okay, if we decide to rehab, let's rehab all the existing Cobra heads, because, I mean, they really have to be done. You're talking roughly 650, or excuse me, $665,000, opposed to replacing all those lights with ornamental. And there's a little bit, you see the different numbers here? The existing poles out there, the existing poles that have to be fixed are about 31. Those are the Cobra heads. But since the Cobra heads are taller, they spacing, they're spaced out further. You can space the Cobra heads out about 125 feet on center. The ornamentals are a little bit shorter, they throw light differently, they have to be spaced out about every 80 feet. So we have 50 ornamentals that have to be installed. And again, the cost is 1.1 million.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Mr. Murphy. Can you wrap the microphone here, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Hold on. I said I had to recognize Mr. Frost first. So if you could hold on just a minute, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Okay, so if we do this, finish off Mall Road with the ornamental lighting that was started by Leahy Clinic and somebody else, will this compel the town to buy more ornamental lighting for all of our business districts? And what would the cost of that be compared to using the existing lighting?
Mr. Hayes.
Well, we really, Mr. Moderator, we have no plans to upgrade any other sections of town with ornamental lighting.
Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Murphy, precinct five. After the discussion about the cell towers, can we be assured that if we buy these good-looking new lights, that they're not going to have cell towers every 150 feet, or whatever it's going to be?
Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If we did have cellular equipment in those lights, we would be able to control what it looks like. That might be one of the benefits. And perhaps receive some type of license agreement with an annual fee attached to it. We've been contacted by some cell companies that are interested in citing some of their infrastructure on our existing lights and traffic signals. And it's something we haven't fully explored yet.
Go ahead.
Is that working? There we go. So, but is that ultimately our decision? I mean, we get to say no if we want to. Is that, is that right?
Yes, on the town, on town infrastructure, correct.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Hardy, precinct one. So will these new ornamental lights match the lights that were done on the two sections already? So it'll be the same design the whole length? And you said that the strip of, that's now kind of cement that separates the two directions on Mall Road, that's going to be redone also?
Grass, sorry.
Keep going.
Mr. Moderator, yes, it'll be done with grass.
Okay, so that'll be grassed in, and then the town will maintain that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kasky.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gary Kasky, precinct six. Some years ago, when Mr. Mercier was here, he had mentioned about how we were going to try and get businesses on Mall Road to help contribute on that area. And I don't think too much effort has been put into that. Could you comment on that, Mr. Sagarino?
Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Kasky, I can't speak to what's been done over that period of time, other than to note that the only contributions that we received from businesses on that strip were related to redevelopments that were going on and related to those parcels. So we don't believe that there's many opportunities left where a property owner's going to do a significant redevelopment on that strip that would allow us the opportunity to present that as an option.
Mr. Maury.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bruce Maury, precinct one. Question actually to Tom, probably. The additional volume of lights from 30 to 51, does that preclude, does that indicate better lighting, or more safe, or just overall better quality lighting in that particular strip? Thank you.
Mr. Hayes.
Mr. Moderator. I mean, there's lighting standards. You want to throw so much light on the road, so that the road is safe to drive on. So it will be a designed, you know, lighting scheme. So it will be compliant and not only light up the road, but these are DocSky compliant lights, so it's not going to cause any sort of backlight that's going to prevent, you know, watching the stars or whatnot.
Mr. Glance.
Thank you, Noel Glance, precinct one. A couple of questions, mostly related to the attempts to get commercial support or contributions from commercial property in the area. One would be the Bronson Mall, which we just approved, a very, very large project that they have currently underway. And if you could put the map back up for Thank you. So the far-left end, the far-left pink section, I would think that Burlington Mall would be interested in funding that, as opposed to us leaving that be the only section not upgraded. Likewise, other commercial property owners in town, the Bronson Mall, I'm sorry, the Bronson Marriott, for example, which is their main properties at the other end, and we just gave them a new development in the district. I would think they might be amenable to also wanting their section at the far-right end to be upgraded. I put in my own inquiries to the landlord of the building I work in. I work on Mall Road, had some conversations, they're working on escalating. But I would think a concerted effort. I'm just not sure that we've done enough to try to get them, let's say, to pay for half, and we pay for the other half, or something. I just, I'm not convinced that we've really tried that hard. I'd rather give up a year and get them to fund half of it, than do it now on our own. I think they'd be willing to put money in.
Mr. Hayes.
I can tell you, from experience, section down by the mall, I sat in with planning staff, which negotiated with Simons on off-site improvements. And we have a big wish list, and it is negotiation, and it's a lot of work. They have agreed to fund the construction of sidewalk along Mall Road, which is a very expensive and a high priority for the town. They, there was no more money left. You know, the pie is always so big. They pushed back pretty hard on some of the other requests. So, you know, the mall, asking Simons to fund, you know, that section is pretty much off the table. The other sections, I know, and again, like Mr. Sagarino said, I can't speak for what happened in the past, but I know Bob Mercier was very good about shaking the trees and trying to find some money to fund this project. And, you know, here we are, more than 10 years later, pretty much, you know, I think we squeezed as much as we can out of Mall Road, you know, with the, and there is not really any more development on the horizon. That's really where the leverage is, when a property is developing, they're at the table, and it's a negotiation. And, you know, I think we got the best we can out of the folks down there for, you know, upgrading the streetlight system.
Mr. Davison.
Doug Davison, precinct two, and the DPW Subcommittee Chair for Ways and Means. So as we talked about this with John and Tom, we spent a lot of time talking about it, and we just, we came to a realization that this is a visual standard that has been set. And so whether you agree with giving preference to Mall Road, that's kind of been done already. And as it looks now, I think it looks terrible. We have a lot of money that's been put into sections of ornamental lighting. And however that was decided in the past, I mean, I think it was decided in concert with the district and with the other landlords along there that put money in. But regardless, there is a standard there, and right now, we have clamshell lights and ornamental lights, and it looks kind of silly. It certainly, almost, it looks worse than if we just had all clamshell lights. We are at a point where the infrastructure repair needs to happen, and it needs to happen now, soon. So we're, we need to spend 600,000? No, well, no, just if we did the infrastructure, yeah, right. And then we would end up with a still piecemeal-looking, some ornamental, some. So what we're doing is completing a visual standard. As far as putting pressure on the businesses, all you have to do is watch a planning board meeting, and I think you'll see that significant pressure is put on the businesses. And there was a lot of negotiation and fighting about the sidewalk, which was extremely expensive because of ADA rules and the grade there, and how steep it was. So Simon, you know, maybe they should give more, but they put quite a bit in, in order to get their new projects funded as it is. So just from watching planning board meetings, it seems like they squeeze the businesses pretty hard. It gets a little uncomfortable sometimes. a little uncomfortable sometimes. So, as we looked at it, I mean, unfortunately, maybe it was wrong to have the ornamental designation on the warrant, because it really is an infrastructure repair and continuing a visual standard that we've already started. So, that was why we supported it.
Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roger Bell, Precinct 6. You continually talked about Mall Road being a showcase for the town, and I agree with you on it. I do have a concern, and I apologize, I'm not sure which town meeting member brought it up, brought up the cell tower issue. And I think if you're considering using Mall Road ornamental lights as part of establishing cell towers on, I think you've defeated the purpose. And I'd like to hear more about how we're going to protect that particular area that we've just, we may be spending all this money on, and it's sure not going to give the same effect if we're putting cell towers on all these things. So, or intimate. So, I'd really like to hear how you're going to address that.
Mr. Sagorino, can you take a stab at that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Bell, the only thing I can add on that is the small cell articles that we're talking about this evening, a lot of it had to do with protecting ourselves from other people's infrastructure, the Verizon's telephone poles. The one good thing about any initiative to put cell towers within our own streetlights and traffic light infrastructure is that we'll be able to control, you know, to a T, what they look like. If we negotiate with somebody to be on our equipment, then, then they would have to comply with what our wishes were in terms of what it's supposed to look like.
I'm not sure you've addressed whether we will or won't put them on those lightings on Mall Road.
It's too early to say. We haven't had any discussions. We've been approached by a couple of carriers that want to talk to us about the possibility. But at this point in time, we have not had those discussions.
Mr. Glance, did you have something additional?
Thank you, Nolan Glance, Precinct 1. I would think, you mentioned earlier in the cell tower discussion, that the lighting pole companies are working on technology so it's incorporated, so it's not an extra thing sticking up on the, every fourth one that wants to have a tower in it. I would think the technology is improving such that we should be putting in poles that already have the technology built in, as opposed to poles and then added on, some add-on later. I mean, have we had discussions with technology companies about the pole companies or the pole providers? I mean, it seems, seems like we're jumping ahead of this when we're about to do something which really would want to maybe have us do something different than we're about to do.
Mr. Sagorino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, we did have just brief discussions, because we were working on the other part of the project. But it does appear that there are manufactured poles that would accommodate the equipment on the inside, things of that nature. So...
Yes, the gentleman behind Nolan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Darrell Lintros, Precinct 6. Kind of along the same lines, I'll jump ahead. My question is about the urgency of this project. I understand that the infrastructure underground is deteriorating. There's been a temporary fix for that with the overhead. No one's mentioned any concern about safety or the condition of the above-ground portions of the infrastructure. So, I don't really question moving ahead with this. I question the timing and whether we can gain a year, perhaps, of, let's see where the small cell tower thing goes. I think in terms of waiting a year, the detriment to our position, given that we don't move ahead with ornamental lighting at this time, I think is small compared to the benefit that we might see in how telecommunications comes, might help fund this project. I think if we just give it some time, if there's not, I mean, certainly take care of infrastructure that poses a safety to the public, safety hazard to the public. But I think we need to wrap our heads around this a little bit more, and if you can speak to the, the condition of the above-ground portions of the, the infrastructure and whether they pose a safety, safety concern or not. Thank you.
John.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. The equipment is not a hazard to people at this time.
Mr. Wells Bean.
Thank you. Andy Wells Bean, Precinct 3. I'm curious as to this project's impact on ongoing expenses, not just upfront expenses. If there are more poles, it seems like the maintenance costs might be increased over time if there are more poles to service. And with more poles, there might be a higher energy load as well. Could we get some information about ongoing operating expenses?
Mr. Hayes.
Yeah, there are, there are more poles. So, there's 30 poles out there now, and looking at 50 poles incrementally to be increased. The LED light bulbs last, I don't know, lifespan, 20 years. So, there, you know, since we switched over to LED townwide, maintenance has gone way down. The power consumption has gone way down, because these light bulbs that used to be like 100-watt light bulbs are running at like 30 or 25 watts. So, yes, incrementally, there would be an increased cost, but significant? I don't think so.
Mr. Killay. Excuse me? Question has been moved. All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to the motion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Let's try that one more time. All those in favor? All those opposed? It's a clear majority. The motion passes. That was our last piece of the warrant, but we have a resolution. The resolution is, Town Meeting supports Burlington's compliance with ADA regulations and therefore requests the Board of Selectmen to return the Human Resources Building's handicap parking spaces on the Murray Kelly side to their pre-November 2018 status. Mrs. Nash, would you like to speak on this, since it's yours?
Thank you. Mildred Nash, Precinct 3. Amy put some passouts, and I hope you have read them. And if you haven't, pick it up on your way out. But basically, this resolution is quite straightforward. There were seven handicap parking spaces that were the most accessible entrance to the Human Resources Building for seniors, and they suddenly disappeared at the beginning of November. And after a number of meetings with the Board of Selectmen, when I came with more than just one of my constituents, the Board of Selectmen on January 14th agreed to unlock the doors that they had locked. It's in the backup. I'm not going to tell you everything. You have to read the script. But they agreed that they would replace the handicap parking signs when it got to be spring. Well, spring has come, and we have, I was told we have five handicap parking. And I'm not very good at math, but when I went up and counted, there were three, not five. And there had originally been seven. If you read the bare bones, you can get all of the particulars. But basically, my concern is that this inability, it seems, to get those handicap parking places put back violates the ADA access where you should have the access to the closest possible entrance. And I think it should be done for two reasons. One, because it's the right thing to do, that the Board of Selectmen voted to do it, and they have not carried out what they voted to do in January. And two, that we, as Town Meeting, may find ourselves being asked to appropriate money to wiggle our way out of why we are not complying with the ADA access regulations. So, I'm hoping that you will vote yes in support of this resolution. Thank you.
Questions from the body. Yes, sir, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Martin, Precinct 7. For those of us who do not know which side of the building the Murray Kelly side is, could somebody answer that question? Is that, when you're facing it, facing the building, is that the left side or the right side? It's the right side. Thank you. So, my question is, how many spaces does the ADA regulations require us to have for the building with the number of occupants that have? And my other comment is, ADA requirements are the minimum required. This is a building which the number of people that go into that building are significantly higher in terms of needing handicapped accessibility. So, I would think that this is one of those instances where we need more handicap spaces than the ADA minimum requirement states. If there were seven there before, why aren't there 14? Thank you. The ADA is required?
Doesn't look like it. Mr. Monaco, did you have something to say?
I'd just like to hear from the Selectmen, and what's the logic that they're using to limit it, or what do they want to do? I don't mind asking for this, but I don't understand why we have the problem.
Mr. Priest, that'll teach you to stick around. You know, you're new to the Selectmen. You ought to, all the other guys bailed out on you.
Clearly, I've made a fatal mistake, Mr. Moderator. So, this is before my time. I don't know if Mr. Sagorino has any more insight than I might, but, you know, I am not entirely sure why spaces were removed, or why they have yet to be put back. I think that they should be put back, and personally, I think that we should probably consider having a few more than there were there before. I know that on that particular side of the building, there are only a certain number of spaces. So, you know, if there were seven, that's as many as can fit. You know, so we're not going to suddenly have 14 spaces on that side in particular. But as a building as a whole, we probably could have more spaces. But that's as much as I have.
Ms. Nash.
Maybe I should just have read what I wrote here and then elaborate on it, because the thing that I'm asking about is the handicap parking, but it was tied with a surprise revelation at the beginning of November, just as the seniors' director went on a month-long leave. And that was that we arrived at the senior center one morning, and all the doors were locked except for the door to the recreation department. And simultaneously, all of the handicap spots, which were the seniors' favorite spots because they were close to the door where you signed in, where you went to the exercise classes, where you had lunch, where you met with the staff. And it turned out there was only one door open. I wasn't aware of this until one of my constituents called, and she and I went to the Board of Selectmen for two meetings where we asked questions and got non-answers as if they were answers. And basically, when we said, nobody seemed to know it among the seniors, and we were told there were many meetings, unfortunately, the meetings seemed to be with the staff there. And incidentally, as soon as the handicap parking was removed, the staff started parking in those spaces, which was one of the things that annoyed me more than anything. But it took a third trip before the Selectmen, when there were five other Town Meeting members, the Veterans Agent, because he was concerned for his people, and there were a couple of people from the ADA. And in fact, I was told right before the meeting, can I keep my people quiet if we just get this over with in a hurry, which did not sit well with me. And so, when they said we will open the doors, I unfortunately raised my hand and wanted some particulars, like when. And that caused a long conversation, and we were finally told, well, they might be able to open the doors by the end of the week, but they couldn't possibly do anything about the parking until spring. And they did open the doors at the very last moment of that week. But spring has come, and in the interim between then and now, they made a feeble attempt to put up signs in buckets with sand, which rolled around and did damage to the cars that parked in the couple of spots that had these. And then, one day, there were no handicap parking things there.
Mrs. Nash, could you wrap this up, please?
Right. So, I'm saying, so, the reason there are three is because I called Mr. Sagorino's office, and he went out and managed to do something that very next day. But unfortunately, it was not the full story. And getting back, they need a lot more handicap parking there. But they most especially need it at the most accessible door. That's why. This, this one should be back to seven. It should be 14, but it should at least be back to what it was for the dreadful surprise. Thank you. And I apologize. That's why I wrote it. I kept making it shorter, because I feel very passionate about this.
We understand that.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez, do you have some numbers you could give us?
Yeah, I'm trying to be brief, particularly because I had nothing to do with the policy of whether or not to lock the door, no opener, et cetera. But, but it's important to know for the Town Meeting members that when the building did get remodel, similar to, like if you were to remodel a McDonald's restaurant, and you happened to move the door, the main entrance someplace else, and that's what happens at the senior center, they move the main entrance to what it is, the left side of the building as you face it from the street. So, at the time that that happened, we increased the number of handicap parking spaces on that side of the building where the main entrance of the building was be. I believe we added probably five or six spaces to that side of the building where it never existed before. Subsequent to that, we did repaint three spaces in the right side of the building, where it was directed to do that by the town, prior town administrator. So, the total number of spaces that we currently have not only exceeds the ADA requirements, it's actually larger than the number that existed prior to our project. So, again, I'm not speaking whether or not there should be more spaces. I'm not speaking of the resolution. I'm just giving background to what we've done in the, in the building, and to the question of how many spaces we had, and if we meet ADA, or if we have more than we're required. So, I'm answering that question specifically.
Mr. Stan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Stan, Precinct 4. Basically, you're absolutely right about a couple of things that I'd like to point out. One is, the main entrance is now on the, as you look at the building, towards the left side of the building, and there are three, four, at least five handicap spaces there. And then there's a couple at the rec. department entrance in the back. And then, of course, you've added the ones on the right. And, believe me, it was foolish on somebody's part to think that people who have trouble getting around to force them to go from the main entrance on the left side of the building, all the way down the building, and make a left, and go all the way down the rest of the building to where most of the events are. But not all the events. And so, you know, there's the pool room, there's the card rooms, there's the elevator on the left that goes up to the second floor. So, that, that having parking spaces, handicap spaces on the left side is very important. So, whatever you do, don't decrease the number from what we have now, please, because I have trouble getting around.
I don't think that's on the, on the docket, Mr. Stan.
I understand when you talk.
We are just talking about the right side of the building.
I understand. But when they, when they, what the last argument... I understand, but when they, what the last argument was, they transferred them to the other side. I don't want them transferring back.
Let's move on. We've spent less time on the million dollars. Yes, Gene.
Gene Rossi, Precinct Two. This will be quick.
Please.
Mr. Sanchez stated he wasn't involved in this decision. Could you please tell us who was involved in this decision?
I don't see it in any of those meetings, but I will tell you that the prior town administrator said to me personally, I need to put as many spaces as you can on the left, which we did, and to, at the time, to remove the ones on the entrance that was going to be locked. Subsequent to that, after the door was opened sometime in January, we put temporary spaces in the back, and we finally made it permanent, again, following those directions. But I was not privy to any of the decision-making, because that's not something that pertains to what I do. Like I said to Millie in the past, I'm the guy that paints the parking spaces and put the signs up. They're somewhere where they go, we'll do it.
So that we effectively threw Mr. Petron under the bus. Good job. I would have done the same. Ms. Saltman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Murnis Saltman, Precinct Two. When Town Meeting voted on changing the Human Resource Building a couple of years ago, I remember speaking out and saying that when you closed the door facing the building on the right, that that was not a good move. And that was done intentionally so that only staff could enter the right-hand side of the building. It took a while until it dawned on everyone that that was a very poor adjustment. And so I would strongly recommend that we keep the handicap parking spaces. But remember, when the people come in on the right-hand door, they still have to walk the whole long corridor of the building to get to the screen where they have to flash their fob, which I'd go to sleep with every night, so that the Council on Aging knows that people are in the building. So, you know, people who are handicapped can still walk, and I understand not everyone is adept, but we have a lot of handicap parking spaces there, I think more than we really need. But nevertheless, that's what it is.
Sally. Ms. Willard. Question has been moved. It's not debatable. All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed? Motion's carried. Brings us to the main motion. Excuse me, the main, yeah, the resolution. All those in favor of the resolution? All those opposed? The resolution passes. Now, we could carry this discussion on a little bit longer, just so we could come back on Wednesday. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Opposed? We're adjourned.